Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ashland Planning Board meeting of Thursday, July 25. We have one public hearing on the agenda tonight, and that is for a cell phone tower modification. But before we get to that, I will call the meeting to order officially at 7:22 PM. And first on our agenda after that is the clerk's report. Kate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have received one correspondence from the public since the last planning board meeting, which was responded to by the clerk on behalf of the board.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda, moving right along, is public comment. So Peter, I will let you manage all public comment, if you don't mind.
Sure, so prior to moving forward to the one gentleman in the room that had public comment, I just want to let everyone know that Mr. Mark DeSoney, who is at the microphone at the podium currently, he did submit a handwritten letter, which is in everyone's binder tonight. So with that said, I will open public comment up in the room first to Mr. Mark DeSoney. Mark, I'm just going to turn the video on. Hold on a second. Pass to a mute.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mark DeSoney. He can stay muted because his volume is going through the microphone. So I'll just mute you real quick, but you're good. All right. Out in the cave, back into the land. Good evening, Mark DeSoney for you on Hawthorne Road, Ashland, Mass., and thank you, Peter, for setting me up. I did send in a piece of paper about zoning bylaws, and I'd like to ask both of the board that they, what you've been talking about, I want to have meetings and everything. This is my way of saying that I want to be part of it. So I sent in this to the planner, Mr. Peter there, the other day, and this is what you got. So if you can look it over, I will answer anything.
I'd like, I'd like to make a comment. So I think this is sort of a good time in the second part of our meeting is like a retreat about our work plan. And the board has been thinking about, I don't think we're quite ready to talk about any, like attacking specific bylaws, because I don't know if you saw the agenda. It has many, many things that retreat and will probably have to prioritize, but I assume some of them should be attacking bylaws, right? So I think when we get there, they're absolutely, we would want a public part of that process, right? And I think there's probably a way to integrate Mark with that.
Yeah, I think with any, obviously, bylaws that we tackle, it's required that the public be part of the process, so.
Yeah, 100%.
And that's what's, one of the answers I wanted to hear, and a little P.S. is to thank you, Ms. Kathy Jusick, for your email back to me and my reply back to you. It did help. And this was the content that I sent up here to the, to the rest of the board here to continue on. It's not just with the comprehensive plan, it's going to be with the planning board, because the planning board is part zoning bylaws in their chart. So I want to just come in and be involved in this together, or every member, either through email, Zoom meeting, I come out to my house and residence, I can do it inside there, and to work it through before you get to September 4th, if possible. September 4th is a big comprehensive plan with the select board. And I figure you've got to understand the regulations and everything to have a smooth talk over both with both boards. That's why I want to get involved in, with the boards themselves to see, because I, when I, last time I did this was around 2016, 2017, with the Form B code, got that passed in this town. That's why I have some experience doing this, and I wanted to show and give back to everything. Does that sound good to you, Ms. Chairman?
Well, certainly, we're going to be looking at zoning, Mark, but I don't think anything's going to be happening that quickly to September 4th. We only have two meetings in there, and one of them, I know several of our members won't be at, I don't think we're going to get there that quickly to suggest zoning before comprehensive plan. I think we're really looking for a little bit more the opposite process, that comprehensive plan will help guide us on zoning. So it may not happen that, that quickly, but we are, as Kate said, we are looking in our agenda for later in this meeting to, to talk more, more specifically, you know, starting to look at, well, what are our goals with zoning? So that's all I can, it's general, but that's all I have right now, so.
So when the planning board itself starts separate from what comprehensive plan is, I figure I can work with the planning board themselves and go with what you have, with what I gave.
Tricia, could I make a comment?
Please.
That I think will help. Mark, I read your comment, and there's, there's some themes. You seem to care deeply about commercial ventures, entrepreneurial businesses, you have interest in that. And as you can see, part of our agenda for our retreat later tonight includes things that relate to business, whether it's zoning downtown for hotels, or discussing bylaws for short-term rentals, talking to the Ashland Cultural Council about using art with private spaces, there's things on our retreat list that relate to business. So my thought would be, because you come to almost every one of our meetings, you seem to have a lot of interest in planning, is maybe see if you can help us find more information about some of the things that we keep talking about in our retreats, in our meetings. So if you're interested in accessory dwelling units, which seems to constantly come up for us, maybe help us find other community drafts of zoning. So I feel like you come to every meeting, you're very engaged, you want to help us out. If you pick one of these things that we keep talking about and give us memos on those things, that would be a productive way to help us.
That, that sounds agreeable. And what I did write down on the pieces, on the piece of paper you all have, came right straight from the, from the town website, zoning regulations. I just copied them. So I figured if you look into them, that I brought up there, it might give you ideas where I am and how you said that, and that, and that's, that is, is my thinking. But I figured if, try to upgrade, so everything could be going forward together, I would like to be in that group, in that upgrade system.
Yeah, well, we don't, we don't have a specific plan about how we're going forward yet, but, but we have your document, and so obviously we'll be here discussing it at other times, too, so you'll be able to follow the progress on where we're going with this, so.
My last comment, after, after, Peter, go ahead.
Please, Mark.
I would like to have an answer either through email, which you do have, somebody on the board has, and either that, or, let's see, through Zoom. And that is just one-on-one, whoever wants to keep up with this with me. And I'll be cautious and social in applying my ideas with the board, so we're on the same track.
Well, Mark, you know I'm always happy to meet with you, so, you know, we can schedule a meeting and sit down and go from there, but, and then I can kind of translate back to the planning board. But obviously, I think, you know, we're still working on the comp plan together, and we do have a list of agenda item, you know, on the items that we want to talk about later tonight. So I think we can keep our minds open and hopefully move things forward progressively.
And I'll keep my mind open for compromising, we all can be together on it.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
At this current time, I see nobody with their hands raised for public comment. You here for public comment?
Concerning a specific topic or any topic? I'm sorry, I reached back here because there was Zoom, like, before. Oh, really? So I just wanted to talk to T-Mobile.
Okay.
Open up the commentary first, and then we'll open up the public comment.
So with that said, I see no more public comment. I think we can move forward to our first public hearing.
Thanks, Peter. Do you want to give us an introduction on that?
Yes. So first, I'm going to read the public hearing, excuse me, the public, public hearing notes into the record, so please bear with me. The Ashland Planning Board will hear a public hearing on Thursday, July 25, 2024, at 7:15 in the Ashland Select Board Meeting Room, second floor, Ashland Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Ashland, Mass. To hear the petition of T-Mobile Northeast LLC, 10 Commerce Way, Suite B, Norton, Mass. 02776, requesting a special permit modification per Chapter 282, Section 6.4, Wireless Communication Facilities, and 9.3 of the Ashland zoning bylaws. The applicant seeks to modify the existing special permit for the placement of antennas and update auxiliary equipment on the existing tower structure in, in, and on the water tank. Just for everyone's clarification, this is a water tank owned by the town at 24 Tower Road. The equipment will be aesthetically consistent with the existing structure and antenna array. The proposed, the proposal includes the installation of 5G-capable equipment. The property in question is located at 24 Tower Road, Access Map 20, Lot 80, in Residential A Zoning District. The public hearing will be held via Zoom and video conference, Zoom is up here, in it, the conference, the link was provided. Parties wishing to be heard on this matter should submit comments to the Ashland Planning Board ahead of time and/or appear at the time, place indicated above. Materials will be viewed at Ashland Town Website under the current cases, or the Town Hall by appointment during normal business hours. For more information or to submit comments, please contact myself, Peter Matzek, at 508-532-7927, and provide my email address, Tricia Kendall, Chair, Ashland Planning Board. With that said, I would like to take a moment and introduce the applicant. So this application came and was submitted by T-Mobile Northeast LLC, and tonight we have attorney Adam F. Brayley of Prince Lobel &amp; Thai LLP representing the application. Just for a, kind of a round description of the project, so this is at 24 Tower Road, it is an abandoned water tank, and having a cell facility goes back indoor, the sighting of a cell facility goes back to 1998, I believe. So in 1998, the town and the zoning board of appeals permitted this location as a cell facility. I believe at this current time, there are two carriers that are co-located on a monopole that is, that goes up through the actual site, indoor water tank, and then it has guide wires anchored to the side of the tank. With that said, I believe in 2008, within this, within the application package, T-Mobile did come in, indoor the company at that time, I know there's been a lot of mergers in the telecommunications world, came in and updated this equipment. So here tonight, we are talking about updating the equipment on the existing infrastructure indoor monopole that currently kind of comes up through the abandoned water tank. At this time, if appropriate, I would like to hand it over to Adam Brayley, attorney Adam Brayley, and please take it away.
Great, thank you.
You got it?
Members of the board, and thank you, Peter. Just for the record, Adam Braylard at Prince Lobel &amp; Thai, we're in Boston, Massachusetts, on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast LLC. Like Peter said, we're here to modify or request special firm, special permit modification to modify the existing wireless communications facility that's located on the tower structure that's on top of the tank, located at 25 Tower Road here in town. The applicant, to Peter's point, there's been telecommunications equipment on that site since 1998, I think it was either Nextel or AT&amp;T that went on at that time. And then shortly after that, I think it was AT&amp;T, so it was Nextel in 98, AT&amp;T shortly after that, and then T-Mobile, under the name of OmniPoint Communications, which is now T-Mobile, went on in 2008. So in 2008, T-Mobile executed a lease agreement with the, with the city, with the town, and then installed its equipment. And now T-Mobile is looking to modify that equipment. The modifications proposed are, the easiest way to do that is tell you what's existing and what we're proposing to do. So what is existing is six panel antennas that are on that tower structure that's on the, on the tank. And the, we have a set of plans that are on, let me just show you, tab three of the, of the plans on, on the package. So T-Mobile has three panel, six panel antennas, two per sector that are currently on the, on that tower structure. T-Mobile proposes to, to replace those with six new panel antennas. T-Mobile also has three remote radio units, which are small, one-by-one-foot units that, that amplify the signal in the coax down to the computers, and those are also on the tower. There's three currently there, T-Mobile's looking to replace those with six new remote radio units. So aesthetically, it's going to look pretty much the same, six panel antennas, for six panel antennas, and three remote radio units for six remote radio units. T-Mobile is going to replace any worn or abandoned, which I don't think there is any abandoned, coaxial cable that is, that runs from the antennas down to the ground equipment, in, on the, or within the T-Mobile's leased area, in fenced-up compound area, there's two, currently two cabinets for the radio equipment, and T-Mobile proposes to replace those with two actually smaller cabinets. So those cabinets won't be as big as the ones that are currently there. As far as, there are the plans, yeah, as far as the, the changes, that's, that's really the, the gist of the proposed changes. So you can see there, if you go, yep, there you go, that, so those are existing, T-Mobile's at the top, AT&amp;T's in the middle, and then there's, there, Nextel, but it's no longer there, so those are, there's no, there's no. So those are, there's no, there's no carrier that's at that lowest level at this time. So we've worked with the planning department. We've worked with Haley Ward. We've been working with them since early 2023 in connection with the modifications here. We did get a letter from the department in, I think it was January 2024, that in our application, that basically stated that we're good to go, provided we conform to the Haley Ward conditions, which we are.
Yep. So just to clarify, so the applicant with AT&amp;T preemptively sent this to Haley and Ward and did a pre, a, excuse me, a engineering peer review. And so there is a letter behind the letter here and the public hearing notice, and it's dated May 23, 2024. And this is from Greg Eldredge, working for the town, reviewing Haley and, I mean, as working for, for the towns, as the town peer review, Haley and Ward. They do all of our water department tank, telecommunications tank review. And I have spoken with him on the phone, and the approved, the proposed plan satisfies his review and from a structural standpoint.
I had a question. In looking over your application materials, tab five, there's a letter from January of 2024, I believe, from Doug Small. And Doug talks about this one very important item.
Yes.
That's how he starts it.
Yep.
To mention is the strength and condition of the concrete domed roof. He's indicating a man lift should be used for all communications, equipment removal and installation to avoid point loading. I'm assuming all of that you're agreeing to.
Yes.
Okay.
So this is an abandoned water structure for the town. But we're like, obviously structurally, it's not great. They're saying, don't like, so what, what is, is there any maintenance the town will need to do? And how does that affect with like the equipment? Because I'm presuming like we're not going to just let this crash, the tower, or that kind of thing.
I think from that standpoint, I lean on Greg Eldredge. I'm not a structural engineer, you know, I think they've checked it out. The water department has checked it out, and they feel confident that the way it, as it stands, it can take this.
No, I meant so like, but if there's future maintenance, how does that impact with this? And then is it temporarily banned or it's never to be used again? Or do we know that? And how is, did anyone ask those questions along the way?
In my eyes, this is abandoned because there's a monopole through the
Oh, okay.
Through the, through the roof that I don't think we're
It's literally through.
It's
There's that actual pole.
That pole goes from the center of the, through the roof. So I do not think the town will be using this again. However, I'm happy to ask those questions and try to get those answers.
It's a little bit of a strange sight. I went up there with, yeah, it's a you don't really feel like you're in Ashland, kind of when you're there where this, you kind of come across this water tower, which was really, I don't know, I was kind of surprised. I obviously had never been up there for any other reason. So it doesn't seem like, again, I'm not an engineer either, but it seems like something that would be, if a water tower had been needed, probably be replaced, that had been reused, given this condition. But I'm not, obviously, I'm not sure. All right. Is there any other questions? For the applicant? All right. I'll open it up for public comment.
Good evening. My name's Eric Jensen. I live at 23 Tower Road, right next to the proposed project. A lot of our questions have been answered, not just tonight, but reading through other projects or other information concerning this project. But our main concern, basically with me and the other neighbors there, are the impact it has of timeline, how long the project will take, construction wise, how much heavy equipment will be coming in, where they plan on stationing and just keeping all this heavy equipment when it's not, maybe not in use in this area. So that's basically our main concern right now is just the overall scope of the project timeline. And throughout, not just length time, but during the daytime as well, what time it will take place.
Because it is a pretty quiet end of the street up there.
Correct.
Yeah. Are those questions that you're prepared to talk about?
I can generally, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can first state is that any work that would have to be done would have to be during, during the day. You know, we have bylaws regarding construction hours, obviously. And so they would have to amend to that. Regarding time and the timeline, equipment, how long it would take, I'll obviously let
Yeah, so generally, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
Through the chair.
Please.
Just to try to answer the question.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So this is a replacement of existing equipment. Generally, what we would do, I think in this case, because of where it's located, we would use a man lift anyway. We're required to, in this case, because of the findings from Haley Ward and the town. So we would have a man lift that would be, that would, you know, drive up there or come off a trailer and then drive up and do the work. Most of the work can be done within a couple of days because it's just replacing the antennas with the new antennas. But I would say that, you know, we would, we would need a couple of weeks for a prep, install, and then take away.
So when you talk about a couple of weeks, do you mean like people, trucks on site, say, 10, for 10 days?
I would think, yes, yeah.
Okay.
To be safe, I think it can be, it could be quicker than that. But generally, the modification structural, the modification, construction installations are relatively quick. I mean, they don't want to be down. The reason is that you don't want the facility to be down for a lengthy period of time. You really want to switch out the antennas so that there's really no downtime.
And that, and that length, obviously, given the nature of the work that would be doing, would also depend on weather and things like that.
That's correct. Right. Thank you. Yes.
And other than the man lift, is there any other equipment that would be on site?
Yeah, I don't think so. I mean, obviously, we're going to have, there'll be ladders. There'll be some vans probably that would come with the equipment, smaller vans, like the Sprinter vans. And then a tractor trailer with the, with the man lift.
I think our concern is that, that, and there
Yes.
That stays either up in the grass, that's a block of driveways or
Yeah, yes, and we can, I mean, that's, that's completely reasonable. And if you want to, if we need to include that as a condition, I believe that that's
That's reasonable. I think that's suitable. Obviously, we would not, during any construction project, we wouldn't have them parking in the public way and or obviously leaving or blocking anyone's driveway. So I think that would be, I think that's common courtesy, to tell you the truth.
Absolutely.
So, okay. So with public comment, there's one person with their hand up. So online, I'm going to ask.
Hello, can you hear me, guys?
Yes, and I apologize. I don't, I cannot pronounce, I'm not going to attempt to pronounce your name, but please introduce yourself with your name and address.
Sure. Thank you for having me speak. My name is Mukesh Chuk, and I live on 5 Royal Colony Circle. That's directly opposite to, like, my backyard faces the tower. So I think a lot of questions have been answered, so thank you for those. And we do have a concern about the relative increase in the power emission from these towers. Presumably, 5G tower replacement that's suggested is, you know, results in higher emission of power. And since we have, we are next to it, we are a little bit concerned about that. So I'd appreciate any commentary from the applicant on this. And also if there's any data or any studies that they can provide us to reduce the concerns. I am representing some other folks on the street as well who have raised this concern to me.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask the applicant to see if he wants to address that question.
Yes, through the chair. Thank you.
Yes, please.
So in every instance, when T-Mobile and most of the carriers either install a new facility or modify an existing facility, like in this case, radio frequency emissions studies are performed to conform to the requirements set by the FCC. That's been done here, and the radio frequency emissions are comply and conform with those, those safety levels. So that study's been completed and, and the, like I said, the, any radio frequency emissions do conform to the safety levels that are, that are, that are, that have been mandated by the, by the FCC. I will say that this is a, is a 5G style installation. However, it is somewhat constrained. Typical 5G installation for T-Mobile is nine panel antennas, and this is only six. So, for example, in the Cedar Street water tank, that, that has nine panel antennas. This would only have six, so there would be a difference in, in radio frequency there.
And FCC, and just, just for the, the notes, FCC that you mentioned stands for?
Oh, thank you, Federal Communications Commission.
Federal Communications Commission.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a couple of follow up. So is that study that you mentioned, that you mentioned, is that done specifically for this tower? Or is it more generic? That's done somewhere else?
The study is specific to T-Mobile's installation.
Okay, great.
At this location.
Great, thank you. And is that, is that a part of the package that you submitted?
I don't think it was required as part of the package, but we could include it as part of the building permit application.
It, what the applicant stated is that it's, he, it hasn't been submitted. But I think if you could submit that, I'm happy to post that online and get that out to the applicant as soon as possible.
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, sure. Certainly, we can install it, include it.
Submit. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the applicant stated in the meeting that he will submit that report, and I can have that posted on the website as soon as tomorrow.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that.
And if you have any issues, fine.
I had just a last question, but that's not very important. If you have press on time, I can rest.
No, please feel free.
Okay, just quickly, how long is this contract for? So is this like a forever lease or is there, is there a time period for this?
Just the
I can answer that if you
Please.
The lease, the current lease agreement with the, with the town of Ashland expires in 2028. So about another four more years.
So this isn't, yes, this isn't looking to, it's not about the lease agreement. It's about doing something while you have the lease agreement active.
Right. And in order to extend that lease or renew that lease, the town would need to, and any of the carriers that are on the tank need to go through a procurement process, which is a public process.
At this time, there's no other questions.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, so our typical process to do this would be if the board is in general agreement, we'll help have, I guess, is there any discussion? This is a pretty typical, we've seen a number of these in the past, obviously.
And just for, my only thought to show is just for the folks in the room and on Zoom, who might not have been part of the prior projects where this has come up. This is falling under the, I'm going to butcher the act. But this is one of those ones where we don't, our hands are pretty tied in terms from the federal government, in terms of what we can do.
That's true. Peter, can you give us just a, just, just so it's a part of this meeting process, a brief synopsis about that regulation?
So back in, back in 2012, as part of the Federal Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act, they state that that application in that law kind of took it, the power away from municipal governments, right? And regarding the updating of these facilities per se, right? And so really, the town of Ashland, and all towns, not just town of Ashland, has limited authority and jurisdiction when a telecommunications company comes in and wants to update their equipment on a already permitted site. And so within this process, right, under the 2012 Federal Middle Class Tax Relief, there are six points, right, of eligible facility. And, and so with that said, it says, number one, the modification does not increase the height of the base station by more than 10%. In this case, we're at the same height. The modification of the transmission equipment on the pole or, you know, does not produce from the edge of the support structure no more than six feet. So therefore, we're not widening the support structure. We're not making this anything different, right? And that kind of goes further on. But the main takeaway is, is that the FCC kind of is in control here, and the town is kind of in the backseat. What we, and I'm going to speak for the planning board on this, is that I think the planning board over the last few years, we find it very important to have public hearings when telecommunications companies come into the town. And we want to make sure that everybody within a certain, you know, within proximity knows what's going on, right? Because it is in your backyard. And so some communities would have the telecommunications company file for a building permit and kind of not go through this process. So we, as a planning board and as a town, obviously have this process. We go through it. We are limited to a 60-day process. Right now, we're on day 35 after receiving this application. We, as a town, only have about 60 days to issue a final decision. But our hands are tied a little bit. But this is public information that's happening and work going on within the community. And so I think holding the public hearing, what we are doing tonight, in making sure it's a public process, that is the goal here, and to make it transparent. And so I can go further through the six points if you would like, but
No, I think what, I just wanted to make sure, since we had folks from the public here asking questions. And to your point, Peter, I think the reason why we handle it differently than some other municipalities is because there are a lot of questions that can be answered really easily in this open forum by the applicant and have everyone sort of on the same page. But to your point, if, unless something is, falls outside of those six points, we really can't do anything other than approve it.
Correct.
So because everything's sort of within that, it is a little bit of a pro forma exercise.
True.
I will add that for me, it's been, although the board is limited in whether we can deny it or not, there are certain limitations. I think these types of hearings, for me, have been very insightful because I listen to the public comment, and I myself become more educated as to what the public is concerned about. And although by federal law, we have some limitations, and certainly there's not a lot we can do as a board, I do believe that there are certain points that the public needs to understand. And one of those is that, and Peter, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that this is technically public property that's being leased. Am I, am I right?
Oh, 100%. Yep, this is public property.
In theory, the public has full access to that site. I can go there right now and take measurements for radioactive, or excuse me, for radio frequencies. And I, on my own, could, as a public citizen, do my own research as a resident as to whether I believe those are dangerous levels for me. So those are some of the things I sometimes wonder about. We, as a board, have no jurisdiction here to order anybody to do that kind of testing. But when the public comes to us and expresses those types of concerns, we have a lot of very educated, scientific people in this community. And I think that it's important to remember, this is a public site that any member of the public is welcome to do testing at. And because it's a tower, the way this works, my understanding is that safety is also dependent upon where your private property is located relative to this public space. So if people are concerned, they have every right as public citizens to go and test the site. site. I hope that's helpful relative to the comment online about safety.
Are there any other comments from the board? Okay. I think then, and our typical process would be to have Peter start with, to put together the, the approval document for this, and obviously there are a few conditions that will come in, come into that, and then we will look at that next time. We need to be a little careful of that window because at our next meeting, I'm not gonna be present and that only leaves two people of a quorum for this particular public hearing. So, either people, right, will need to review the tape.
Well, it's a special permit, so Amanda could sit on this.
Oh, Amanda could sit on the special.
Oh, you're not here, okay.
Right, she's not here either. So, we're a little bit in this summer season.
So, doing the, doing the math, right? The next meeting, August eighth, it would be forty-eight days. And so, we'd be, we would still be in the timeframe of, of acceptability, I would say. I did not look to the, I think the next meeting would be fourteen days after, so I think we would cross over that sixty day time period. But, if acceptable to the applicant and we can put this in writing, we can move this to August twenty-second.
Twenty-fifth, isn't it, twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth?
Isn't it the twenty-fifth or August?
Nope.
Well, twenty-second, sorry, Peter, sorry.
Oh, okay.
If it's not here, it's twenty-second.
I don't know why I have the twenty-fifth in my head.
Today's twenty.
Maybe that's why.
And at that point, we could have a full, we would not have to ma, we wouldn't have to go through the Moazu affidavits or anything like that.
Yeah.
It's, it's like, just remind me of the process, the hearing doesn't, did the hearing close or did we close the public hearing process?
We tend to leave the, we tend to leave the, the public hearing open until, until we can look at the, until we can look at the, the doc approval document in case there's other information that comes into it, in case we have more questions to ask. Because otherwise, we're, we're very limited in what, who we can ask questions of until that time.
Yeah, at this point, we usually will, we will close it and then vote on it with an approval document. And if, and if we have to continue it out to the twenty-second of August, I can assure that we can have a draft decision, you know, complete. At the very least, by August eighth, for everyone to start reviewing, and obviously I would share a copy with you in the meantime.
Yeah, so we can include, I mean, the four of us can be on the special permit process, but two of us four will not be here on the eighth, so I think it'd be best if we can continue it out until the end of August, to the twenty-second, so that we can make sure. And usually, we go at least a day after that because we need to collect signatures and stuff like that.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, I'll follow up on the email, so we'll just continue it out to August twenty-third, which is a Friday. And as, as long as we, there's no kind of hiccups or, and we'll kind of go from there.
I can, I can always zoom in on the eighth just for this if it helped, but I need some signature and we're not here.
Yeah, I can't even zoom in that day, so. So.
I think that's, if it, if it works for the board, the twenty-second, we'll, we'll let the client know that it's.
I think summer schedules were a part of your, your earlier scheduling as well. So, okay, if you can take care of that.
Yeah, we'll follow up with, with emails, but I think tonight we need to motion continue it to the twenty-second and, and we'll follow up verbal, we know, I think we got the okay verbally, but we'll follow up and I'll file that with the town clerk tomorrow.
Right, is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Twenty-Four Tower Road with T-Mobile, pending approval of extension of the deadline.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote?
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Turzik, aye.
Amanda Hayes, aye.
Leanne Trisha Kendall, aye. So, we will see you on the twenty-second, when it'll be very close to back to school season. Thank you. All right, so, next on our agenda, we knew our public hearing agenda was gonna be quite light, light tonight, so the planning board put together a list of topics that were just generally compiled of, I, I compiled a memorandum, I should say, regarding different suggestions people made about possible topics for the planning board. It's quite a, a long list, but it shows the diversity of things that we, that we work on and, I'm sure Amanda will be back in a sec, but Anna, you had, had an idea about how we, I mean, we have time in this meeting, but we don't have all, I'm sure we don't want to stay here all night. So, how do we, you had some ideas about how we can approach kind of a long, complex list and, and get something out of our evening?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess what I'm seeing here is three different categories of things. I think it seems like the, the guest speaker piece and the processes piece is a little bit more simple than the stuff on top. The bylaw work, I think, is what is challenging to us because of the amount of work that's involved, how to go about it, et cetera. So, I guess my suggestion for Trish, to Tricia was, do we wanna talk about the bylaw stuff and sort of figure out from each one of us what two or three things really stand out as a priority, priority for us and come up with some sort of plan? Obviously, we're not gonna solve these problems in one retreat, but I had suggested a prioritization for each person and sort of some consensus as to what do we as a board want to focus our attention at and come up with a timeline of some kind as to how we go about that. That was essentially the suggestion, and then in theory, you could have a go-to person who sort of becomes responsible for owning that priority for a period of time and that person can sort of, in theory, lead the work, gather certain basic information, maybe even work with Mark to do some research, present it back to the board for further retreat, further discussions. That was generally my suggestion.
And so, basically, the, the middle topic, like, like you said, joint meetings, guest speakers were not usually ones to say, no, we don't want to talk to you, or we don't want a joint meeting, usually those are always informative for our board. And these are just things that have come up, not even just with this call for requests, but things that we've talked about before that haven't quite made it on our agenda, so, and there might be more as, that, that we might add to this list that we want to bring in throughout the year. But it's not something that necessarily needs to be discussed, right?
I, I mean, we could certainly discuss it, but I'm thinking like if we have an hour to do this retreat part of our agenda, maybe we agree that, you know, forty minutes goes to bylaw conversation and prioritization and a plan, and twenty minutes can go to discussing the other two topics that seem a lot less controversial and more sort of, hey, what are we thinking? So, I don't know how you want to go about it, but I feel like we should pick a timeframe, stick to it, try to get through the agenda and figure out a plan of attack for the bylaw work.
I, I think if any, unless anyone has a different opinion, I think that, that guest speaker joint meeting thing can really be like, it's just for us to keep track of, feel free to add to it, you know, we'll keep an ongoing list of those things, but there's probably not a big discussion to have there. This, you know, about discussion would be who to invite first, but I'm not sure that's a critical discussion at this stage. So, but between the bylaw work and Kate, I think a lot of, I think you had a, a lot of comments about processes and procedures, so how does that, how does Anna's suggestion fit with maybe your concerns about that category?
I, I mean, I agree, I think they're kind of simple, I think they should be talked about, see how much agreement and, and a path forward, but they're kind of simple ultimately.
Okay. So, Amanda, any?
No, I think it makes sense to start with bylaw work, maybe give ourselves like, we want to be wrapping up a forty-five so that we can move on to the other things, I feel like that makes sense, it doesn't have to be in forty-five, that was just like an idea.
No, no, makes sense.
You mean, moving on to the joint, to the guest speaking and the other stuff?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Mosey through those as faster things at the end, yeah.
All right, so, sounds good, so why don't we, I don't think, things don't need to be necessarily taken in any particular order, they weren't put in any particular order by me, so feel free to take them out of order wherever you want to start.
I'd just like to comment on the, the tree preservation bylaw, because I said I would contact the sustainability committee and kind of their thoughts. So, the best I could get was that they've sort of, they haven't really met and it's been, you know, travel and then summer plans. So, I, I would assume it's not off their plate, but I could not get any confirmation on that at this time.
Are we thinking that we just want to sort of talk through our priorities and what we each think makes the most sense among?
Yeah, I think so, I think it's just anything we want to have out there, like where do we start with this thing, how strongly do we feel about it, who's really interested in it?
For me, I feel pretty strongly about the ones that we already have pretty substantial progress towards, like, we've invested a lot of time in the tree bylaw and tree preservation between standing, you know, you know, they're sitting meeting where it's just that, or having sustainability here on multiple occasions. I feel like it makes sense to sort of try to wrap up the ones that we've made, that we've already invested a lot of time in. And for me, that would be the tree bylaw and MBTA communities, to just like focus on those two.
Yeah, the, the MBTA communities, just so you know, there, there are some other information that was given, it was really just more about the, the updates, it wasn't to be necessarily to be discussing MBTA. But, there's a calendar there and there's some, there's a map here, which it, it's actually a, a slightly earlier draft than, there's a few corrections that need to be made on it, so I'll say that ahead of time, but I was intending to talk about that during the updates versus.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and, and it's more something that, it's kind of, like that one's gonna happen.
It's an official thing.
Yeah, it's, it's already an official thing and it's already, yeah, it's already gonna happen.
I mean, the, the tree bylaw, if, obviously, we need sustainability on that, I just wonder if we sort of pencil it in for an early September meeting with them, I sort of, it would like knock out one of our joint meeting, although I don't know if they're on here, but I know that they didn't want to go forward in the spring, but like, it's sort of if they end up wanting to go forward in the fall, to be able to have it on there in September to have a conversation and try and tie up loose ends from the last, where we left everything in the spring.
Did, did you, did Kate, did you say you actually talked to someone about this or there, there's, we're kind of where we were before?
I sent an email, I didn't hear, and then I did make a phone call to say what, what's up, and they really haven't actually met. I think more schedules, so nobody can really comment, right, as a board.
I'm not surprised because I think a lot of boards like us have quieter summers and people are on vacation, so maybe, Kate, if you're comfortable following up with them, and I feel like that might be helpful to figure out what their interest is before we go on with it.
That's true.
Yeah, because I think it was, because the notes, the minutes are even in here, right, of the, and it was actually a pretty complex discussion.
They were taking things back, for sure.
Yeah. And so, like, the, at least the first meeting in September is right after summer, I, I just wonder if they'll be on top of things and it seems.
If they haven't, yeah.
Yeah, it'll seem to be, we'll be relying on them to say, is this, do you want to talk about this again, is it ready to talk about, do you even, do you want to, with the sustainability committee, even do you want to have another working rehash meeting, something like that, you know, to, doesn't have to have all the answers meeting, but maybe it's reaching out to, to the sustainability committee and see.
Saying we're, it hasn't, it's not off our radar, we'd be happy to do something in the fall if you guys are making progress, because we haven't met yet, but like, who knows, August, spring, December.
Right, right, to, to meet and, and to see where it is.
Okay. I guess I'll, I'll jump in to kind of my reaction to the bylaw list. In my, in my brain, because I'm very linear, I sort of separated it from things we're required to do versus optional things. So, the MBTA zoning thing, it's not even a question, we have to do it by state law. So, to me, that's not even like anything we should be discussing, it is a priority because we're required to make it such, period. The other things, you know, one thing I'll say is, so far on the comprehensive plan work, and Kate, you can correct me if you disagree, a lot of the discussions, whether it's the public or the, the committee, has been consistent with some of these things, whether it's tree preservation or accessory dwelling units, there's definitely prioritization in the community on Ashland being very green, very tree-like, and focus on alternative affordable housing, and ADUs are a very acceptable form of such in the state of Massachusetts. And so, obviously, we have a bylaw already in ADUs, but it's got some limitations and we don't have really a dedicated resource mechanism to make that a successful thing in Ashland. But it's very clear to me, based on how the comprehensive plan work is going so far, that the things we have listed here are not contrary to what I'm hearing the public is interested in. So, my kind of general opinion is that we as a planning board, because zoning is within our purview, have a responsibility to congruent to the comprehensive plan process, to take those public comments and priorities and start to actually do the work, so that by the time we are prepared and engaged with the public, we as a board are more prepared. So, I don't really look at the comprehensive plan process as a required step prior to us doing our work, I look at it as a congruent step. That if I, as a planning board member, am hearing those are priorities for our community, I believe I can bring that back to this board and say, hey, we should do something about this. So, that's kind of a general comment. And then, as far as sort of where I'm willing to put my head to, obviously, the tree preservation comment I agree with, with Amanda, I think that we should engage with them. The accessory dwelling unit thing really interests me, I know that Tricia, I believe, had prior work on that topic, I don't know where that is. I guess the, the two topics that are most of interest to me are the Airbnb short-term rental and the rezoning downtown to allow some limited, smaller hotels. Those are things that I'm especially interested in because I believe that ten years from now, Ashland is gonna be more competitive statewide and the hospitality industry and the economy seems to be shifting towards those types of downtown revitalization type of ideas, so that we should start thinking that way, not because we're gonna, you know, become the next hot ticket item to travel to, we're not the Cape, but you'd be surprised how many communities are not prepared for the Airbnb short-term rental issue. Kate and I went to the planning event that happens in Worcester every year, and this is being discussed as something that many communities are not prepared for, and when it happens, they don't have zoning ready. And those communities that are thinking ahead tend to do better, and there is revenue to be captured in that, there are communities that are lawfully taxing these types of properties. And so, we should be exploring that and thinking about it before we miss that opportunity. And it tends to get hotter, the hotter the real estate market is, and so, these things are interrelated and we should be ahead of it, so that we don't get, the public is not frustrated that we didn't think of it. So, I guess for me, those two things are, I have a special interest in, the Airbnb short-term rental thing and the downtown hotel zoning, and I'm willing to do some, you know, preliminary research on those and bring it back to the board for further conversation. But I'm also happy to help with the ADU and tree preservation thing, if that has focus for others on this board.
Um, just a, just a clarification, that on the accessory dwelling units, I haven't actually done any preliminary research on that, I'm just kind of familiar with it because I have done an ADU in Ashland, and so I know that process as well as looking at them in other communities as well, so, as a part of my job, part of my day job. So, but I, I agree that both Airbnb and the accessory dwelling units, you know, they also have a lot to do with housing and our housing production plan and, and things like that, you know, because Airbnbs aren't housing, right? They're not, they're not permanent housing for people, so it's, it's important to take that in, to look at it closely, like you said, and have regulations about it. So, and we do have accessory dwelling units as part of the housing production plan, obviously, which was approved as well. So, and, and Kate had brought it up a while back about looking at that more closely, and I think, I, I think it's a good idea, I think a lot of communities are looking at it closely because of the shortage of housing, because of the good thing it can, good things it can provide, and how do we do it, if we're gonna make modifications in what we have now, how do we do it right? How do we learn from other communities and, and do it as well as we can? The other thing I, I think I mentioned before is, that I'm kind of particularly interested in, and it's, it's actually maybe more of a drab subject, is the general review of the bylaws, that's one of the things that in signing up for a second term. That's one of the things that in signing up for a second term on the planning board is something I just thought, I've gotten so deep into the planning board bylaws in the past few years that it's something I feel like I can use that experience for to maybe straighten some of this stuff out while I'm on the board. So it's, it's a little dry because I don't think it's about big overwhelming changes, but about little things. But it is something that has been on my kind of personal to-do list, I think, when I, when I start to look at the bylaws and see those kind of, kind of frustrations in there. So I would, I guess, be leaning toward that one for myself as, but also be willing to contribute to the ADUs because I do have professional experience in, in working with those.
I think that's the general review is, I feel like it would be such, such a missed opportunity if you've already sort of identified those things and feel like you've gotten like so experienced in them in the past. Because it's almost like the other areas where we've done legwork, it would be a waste to not.
Yeah, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying I haven't memorized, but I'm, I'm saying that there's, I just keep coming across the same things and I'm like, I'm frustrated that it's not clearer or it seems in, just like it says here, something's in conflict, something repeats. And we, it just needs a.
And like, why lose that institutional knowledge when we have it teed up? Like that's, that feels like a no-brainer.
So Anna has kind of called out things that she's interested in. I know everyone's schedule is tight, but is, and I don't think, and I don't think necessarily there has to be things that, hey, I feel passionate about this, so I will tackle it. But is there any, and, and we have two of our members who aren't even here. But do you guys lean a certain way, like if you were gonna pick something from the list?
I'll just give my kind of two cents rundown as well that, so I a little bit disagree with Anna about the MBTA Communities Act. Obviously, we do have to do it, but this is really critical to be in the public. So I think when we.
Oh, absolutely. No, no, no. It's number one because it has to be done. We have no choice, is what I mean. Yeah.
But it, making sure that it gets the proper attention, right? So I think the accessory dwelling units, I mean, me personally, I, I wouldn't want to put, I would support the board, but effort unless it would be flipping to a byright, which we all probably know is how the state's considering anyway. They might get to it before us, but I, I think that shows goodwill that we're hearing about housing. And it's, it's actually, I consider it low hanging fruit. I know it's work to get it right, but that, that would show.
You're saying it's a no-brainer.
A win, a progress, we're paying attention, we, right, that, I think that the Airbnb short-term rentals, that, again, there's communities that we've learned, like they get way ahead of this and it would be very smart of Ashland to be ahead of this before it's a problem. So I think it's in keeping with that. The downtown hotels, I think, is gonna take some convincing of the public of why that's coming up, maybe not a lot, but. And the general review for it, this could be ongoing, but I feel like that's literally one of the reasons I was on the board to set the precedence of having people like Mark and more people pay attention, write in and say, this is a conflict and helping. Even, I think, more than Tricia, like the, one that I think really should be looked at is, we learned over the discussion, can we ask for more than 10% affordable so we're out of the pit? That if it's five stories, we can't, and that seems silly to not lower it since we, we haven't heard the public clamoring for five or more story buildings in Ashland residential. So that seems in that cleanup, if you're lowering it four stories, at least we, by that research, which again, economics changes all the time, but the last report was 12 and a half, which is still better than 10. It makes, again, a statement, the board's paying attention, the community's paying attention. So I think the, the cleanup should probably be ongoing through all our terms forever, but like, that's not exactly a cleanup in the same way you were thinking.
No, so I think that, and I think that's, but it's interesting that there's, there's different, there's different ways of focus on that cleanup.
Yes.
Right? And, and, and that's okay because there's plenty of work to do to spread out, right? So it's okay if someone's focusing on one thing and someone's focusing on another thing based on, you know, interests or, you know, passion about something, so.
Well, so I think, I think it is sort of the whole board, but these, what I'd want to do if I'm, like, just because doing on the comprehensive plan too, which also takes a lot of time, is some reasonable schedule, we think these could be looked at. I don't think, I'm not saying it's instantaneous, but I think that's helpful to the public. Like here's our actual work plan published on the website, what, and our potential timeline of bringing these to people, drafts of things.
So I guess I'm struggling with two things. One is, there's like, for me, something like, like what you mentioned. Hey, there's a zoning bylaw where one little sentence just makes zero sense and we could literally just like do that in 10 minutes and make it make more sense. That to me is so easy. I don't know if we need a work plan. It's almost like if we can agree as a board that there's room for that type of thing and we can make it a regular agenda item for us and actually use it, where if we see something, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna say it, something stupid in the zoning bylaw that just can be changed quickly, let's start drafting those as we go in a regular way. I don't think we need a work plan. We just need to agree that that's what we want to do as a board and put it on our agenda in a regular way. The more complicated stuff like, hey, rezoning downtown for hotels, guess what? I will, I will have to do some research, bring to you as the board the things I already read about the hospitality industry growing in Massachusetts. It's one of the fastest growth industries, what that might look like for, for, for us. Maybe I'll reach out to Framingham State and try to kind of gather up some basic economic research on it, present it to you, do some research. That's far more complex. It's not like something we can just like throw together. That might require a work plan. And I guess if there's someone who's passionate about it, I can propose something to Tricia. Hey, I'll give you research by such and such date. I'll give you a memo by such and such date. Maybe she'll, we'll put it on the agenda by such and such date for another conversation. And then if there's consensus on the board, I could sort of go off into work mode, you know, and reach out to, I don't know, other committees that might be interested, start looking at a potential draft, bring it back, et cetera. So that's where I'm struggling, like figuring out, you know, work plan for what, right? Like what does that mean?
So I, I can just say, I think we, our board does not always get the public or the public understanding. Like for instance, I'm just gonna say, people have told us a, a case was in front of us for three years, which isn't true. And so I feel like it just goes with that public, like we are gonna start working on these. And so that, if you don't come to town meeting, like what, where did this come from? Like I want to avoid that, right? So I guess that's what I'm talking about, a published work plan that people could, I don't know how many people click on the website, but at least it's there. And so we're, we're looking at, these are the five things we're looking at and the general cleanup could be that. I guess that's sort of where that's coming from, from, from me.
Yeah, I think it's, for me, it's about like list, listing, you know, goals for this, this year, which isn't a calendar year, but like September to September, you know, let's say. And not necessarily about, we're gonna do this first and then that second and this, because I just can't guarantee that with my schedule night. From it seems what most people of our schedules, probably no one can, can pinpoint their schedule that way. So to me, it's about bigger goals and things we hope to achieve and, you know, like, so what are we focusing on? So.
It sounds like so far, based on our conversations, we're all in agreement that MBTA Communities Act is a priority for this calendar year, September to September.
There's no choice.
Right, because we have no choice.
Right.
I'm also hearing the tree preservation and the general conflicts inside the zoning, like the obvious stuff, the low hanging fruit, as you put it, seems like we could put them on the top of our priority focus. Like we want the tree preservation stuff not to fall off effort. And it sounds like we are interested in like, if we see something silly in the zoning bylaw, we want it, we want to give it a shot to kind of work together. And then everything else, I think, is really up to whether we have time and passion, so to speak, to do it. And if we kind of throw it on the list as, these are our interests, we're gonna see how we do as a board, as long as we agree that we're willing to be open-minded and hear from whomever is passionate about it. Like it would be waste of my effort to go and do the research and not have the opportunity to present it to the board. So if we all agree we're interested, I, I'm more than happy to do some legwork and present memos to the board. But I think we need some consensus that yes, these are the things that we want to look at.
And I think that's kind of my point, why I'm calling it a work plan, because I don't wanna, I've already done a fair bit on ADU and I've contacted other like state agencies and got references, but like if it's not gonna go anywhere, I, I do not want to do any more work.
I don't disagree because we have a lot to do already on the comprehensive plan. So for me, it's like, you're looking for that formality. I guess that's what I'm, I'm looking for consensus. This is really something we as a board want to explore. It doesn't mean we're gonna do it.
Right.
Like we're not actually gonna finish it maybe. Maybe Anna does a bunch of research, gives it to the board and the board is like, oh, this is not really our thing. But there has to be some agreement that we're gonna, we care enough to allow us as a board to explore these things.
Yeah, I mean, I think with the hotels and the Airbnb, it's definitely not something that I would have thought of. It's like, yeah, Ashland, it's not, it's not Cape Cod, you know, so is this really a thing for us? But you're saying, no, I think it might be. I think it might be coming, you know? And so I think that's valid and I'd be very interested in what you, what you find about it. Just because I, it didn't float to the top of what I was thinking. I'd be very interested to hear about it because it's kind of forward thinking.
It's curious.
Something like the ADU, I think, is, it is, right now, it's happening and so it should be, like, it should be low. It should be low hanging fruit. It's already in our housing production plan. I think to have it by right, it's already there as a goal. It's not like it's new. So let's just pursue it in the right way and, and see if we can come up with the thing that works for Ashland. To me, it's a no-brainer as well, right? It just takes putting the pieces together. And maybe, maybe this fall we'll have time to do that, so.
I, I agree with that and I think for me, a little bit of my, I had a little bit of a different take of the role of the comprehensive plan with things like the Airbnb and the zoning for downtown hotels where like I, I, I sort of err on like a little bit more of the side of the approach we've taken with MBTA communities of like wanting to see the results of the comp plan so that we're not sort of tripping, tripping over each other sounds negative, but like duplicating work or sort of like getting, putting a cart before a horse with, with that part. So for me, some of like the bigger theoretical things feel, to your point, Anna, about like not wanting to go off and do a bunch of work on it and then like have it stall out, I think that's a completely fair concern. I'm also interested to learn more about them. I think I'm in your camp, Tricia. I think I wouldn't want to push something like super fast through to conclusion or through to a bylaw on either of those topics until the comp plan was coming together a little bit better and we could see how they interact personally. But I do, but I am like intrigued to learn more about them. So that's sort of where I am on, on those two. And everything else feels like something that's like right now teed up already sort of either in existence and we know it needs help, like ADUs or tree preservation, which is, you know, we, we thought it was gonna go to Springtown meeting. So like sort of very formulated in a way. I mean, it's not, but it is, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
As a priority formulated, I guess.
So just to, for clarification, like the comprehensive plan process is setting priorities for the community and recommendations for the kind of zoning that might be addressed. The problem with something like Airbnbs is, it's not like the community can say that's a priority, like it's just happening. It has nothing to do with the priority of the community, so it's a little bit different from comprehensive planning because it's just there. Like if you go to Airbnb, I did just now out of curiosity, and you put in Ashland and random dates, you will see all the Airbnbs in the region. Many of them are apartments. We're building more apartments. It's not like something we can prioritize in a comprehensive plan. It's like if the comprehensive plan allows for apartments and growth, then this keeps happening. It's not like we have a way to, it's not like we have to wait for the comprehensive plan to be done to know it's already happening, is what I'm trying to say.
I think there's a difference in that sense.
It's kind of, yeah.
I guess they're the two like least developed of the idea, just because it's dealt with.
Yes.
So I love them for that reason.
Yeah.
But I think you're right that Airbnbs is like a problem that exists and to your point, like communities get stuck. When it becomes a problem, it's that's sort of a more proactive thing and not as much of a planning thing. I think the hotel thing is a little bit more of a planning thing.
Absolutely.
So I, I should have separated them in that sense, but I, I was kind of lumping them again because they were sort of the ones that we've made the least, that we've delved into the least so far as a board.
And the hotel thing is coming up in the comprehensive plan process and I think we're gonna hear more about it from the experts, the consultant team, et cetera. I think one of the questions I had asked the consulting team in the last meeting we had with the select board was that issue and they, the person who spoke said he would do more research on it. So like again, it's a congruent issue where as the comprehensive plan process explores downtown and potential rezoning, I would love to help the board get more educated on it so that we have, have an actual educated voice. We may say as a community, no, we don't want hotels downtown, right? But we as a board need to kind of understand what's happening statewide. Sometimes I look, if it's okay, I'll just share this, sometimes I look to what other communities are doing and interesting things, right? And whether it's planning or zoning or whatever, and these are some of the things they're thinking about. So it's kind of trying to get us to catch up, if you will, to other vibrant communities that are similarly situated.
I, you know, I would think that, and just to kind of think about what a result of this is tonight, is that the, the first four things on there, the tree preservation, ADUs, Airbnbs and the, and the hotels, to me, those are the four that get like maybe on our webpage or, you know, that, that we write a few sentences about each one of those. You know, if we have, if we have planning board goals, you know, the board would like to work on pursuing a tree preservation bylaw, working with the sustainability committee. This bylaw is intended to help preserve trees in our community, you know, just a few things, like what is it about, right? Just a few sentences. So for something that's for the community, the public can actually understand what we're doing. MBTA, I think it, it has its own page already, right? And it's just not, it's not a year-long goal for the planning board. It's, it's happening. And, and, and the general review is also just like, there's not much to say there. Like, yeah, we should clean up our bylaws a bit, right? It's not really a, that, that exercise isn't meant to change the bylaws. That's, that's something, they do have to go through town meeting, I'm not saying that, but it's meant just to clean, just to clean it up, not to change the intent. And that to me is different than the first four, which is really about a planning issue versus a cleanup issue, right? So at least in, in, no, some of the things Kate suggested maybe are different and those aren't the things I'm talking about. I'm talking about the basic cleanup. So that might separate into a, a separate category that would make it into a fifth goal. So just to be clear about that, I wasn't meaning to undermine what you had said. So does that make, does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that is logical to kind of announce to the public, these are the things we're thinking about. This is how we're separating these items and contemplating them. I guess my only other thought is like, when we do meetings, when we get busy again, you know, sometimes I feel like we bring the bylaws with us, at least you've seen us do that. We, but we're like so in the mode of the project, we're just like applicant speaks.
Yeah.
Public comment, we are speaking. We don't really take a breath to be like, what is the zoning's part that applies? Is it clean? Does it make sense to us? And I wonder if we should make an effort to do that more and maybe start taking notes of, okay, this is the zoning that applies. Here's some sections in here that we find could use some cleaning and we put them aside and we become more active in that kind of awareness as we go.
I guess, yeah, I mean, that's exactly what I'm talking about because when we get a project and I am reading through the, all the Wildwood bylaw, right? And I'm like, oh, boy, you know, this is, this is a little convoluted here.
Yeah.
You know, and no wonder we get to, and then.
Right. I guess what I'm suggesting is a formal, almost like micro retreat every time we have a project that focuses us on the bylaw. Like even 20 minutes of what is the bylaw that applies to these projects and what's dirty in them that we want to clean up? And then we move on to the project, like ground ourselves in this work. If we say it's a priority for us to clean up the zoning, the only way it's ever gonna work is if we actually have it on the agenda item as a grounding exercise and, and it's public and it's there and it's happening in a regular way and we're tracking it and we're making notes. And then in some ways that benefits the projects that are right after.
Yes.
So it can be done in a, in an organized way, ongoing.
I would say like two things. One is that when this year we have new projects come in, I would say the meeting before, if possible, we have that. If we get something in the Wild District, the meeting before. If we get something in the Wild District, the meeting before the public hearing is introduced, we have that little mini session. But in the meantime, I'm gonna be looking, I don't know, I don't know what order, but I'm gonna be looking at them anyway.
Oh, yeah, no, we should all do our job. Yeah, we should all do our job, which is like, we should know what zoning piece applies and we should be reviewing it. We should become prepared, for sure. I'm not saying like that stops.
No, no, I'm saying that before we get a project in, another project in Wildwood, I might be looking at it anyway for those kind of inconsistencies for this kind. At the same time, you're looking at hotels and Airbnb's.
You have them in your, you've tabbed them in your mind.
They're driving me, they're driving me a little crazy already.
So, there's no reason to like throw that list out.
I say that's very important. Let's get that done. That's way too stressful to have. Um, no, no, in all seriousness, I get it. Like, I I do think that there's been consistent things that you, Tricia, and you. Have said, both of you, Kate and Tricia. So I feel like you guys are really well-equipped to try to clean it up for some reason, cuz I think you're very detail-oriented that way. Um, I'm just trying to suggest a way to do it as a board that benefits the actual projects as well. Because like sometimes I feel like, I guess I'm kinda going off into the best practices piece of our agenda. Where I feel like we struggle sometimes as a board. When we get busy. We're like in this sort of energetic mode of hearing the project without the context of the bylaw, and I think that's that's a missed opportunity there.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that's, um. Yeah, because we've been trying to be more consistent about saying, okay, this is a special permit. This is a site plan review. They're different. And to pay more attention to that, but it would also be, um, and I think, and I think we've definitely looked at these things earlier. Here are the criteria for Wildwood. This is what we have to pay attention to. That's different than downtown. We have to pay attention to what's in the bylaw for Wildwood, right, kinda thing. So, um, I think we've been getting better at it. But as new projects come in, we should have a discussion. When when Peter alerts us that something's on the horizon, we should start looking at that particular by, set of bylaws. You know, and maybe some of them have, will have been changed along the way, you know, and and it probably not cuz it's gonna take a while to to get through that. But to give ourselves, uh, to know where all those little inconsistencies are or, uh, you know, things that are unclear, things to pay attention to.
And sometimes in the context of a project, because you're using it as an example to apply the bylaw, the inconsistencies are more obvious. Like, if I just read a bylaw right now with zero project in front of me, I'll find something wrong with it, but. A live project is what makes it alive. Like, oh, wait, how does this apply to an actual real thing?
Well, this is why we've had Pond Street projects, we've had Wildwood, we've had downtown. And so when we look at these now, we're like, oh, yeah, I remember we had a little issue with that particular point and why, why, why did we have an issue? What what's not clear about it? So.
All right, it sounds like we have a plan to at least draft up a little summary of the bylaws and publish it as some kinda loose concept for the public.
Kate, are there things that you can pull out of my take on the general bylaws, which I don't. That, which is different. Than what you're saying? Is there something you can pull out to be with the other four instead of mine, which I think is about housekeeping?
I think there's more housekeeping. Well, I think that five-story thing, when I heard and asked, like, that seemed like a no-brainer to lower that. It's also all over the comprehensive plan, like we're getting pretty far. We, it's a draft vision and they said it can change, but like housing. Affordability, housing for all types is there, and there's definitely, um, like the pre-existing non-conforming. The way our bylaw is now basically can obliterate those houses potentially, so if that, that's a change, though. That is. That is not a cleanup. That is a change, the bylaw, but it is under the guise of preserving housing.
Yeah, and those are the things we don't see a lot cuz they go to ZBA instead of planning board.
Maybe, that might be true, yeah.
No, pre-existing section threes, pre-existing, all pre-existing non-conformities regarding special permits and variances go through the zoning board of appeals.
So, but I guess, I mean, I know that our housing stock will be in danger if that's not.
Yeah, definitely not, definitely not to say. I I'm not used to looking at those in Ashland. But I am used to looking at those in other communities, so.
I mean, those are the two off the top of my head, and related to that would probably be. I think the definitions, I would put them under the cleanup, but but to your point, they are not simple cleanup. They are somewhat changing potentially. There's a little of both in them.
Definitions I would definitely put in that category, yeah.
But some of them need cleanup to like make it clear, but it would alter. So, it overlaps both.
Yes, that's true.
But those would be my top three is the definitions, the five stories, pre-existing non-conforming.
I I do wanna add one thing. From I, from what I remember for the comprehensive plan, our. Agreement with the consultant does not include actual drafting of bylaws. Is that right, Peter?
No, they will.
Yeah, they're not gonna be drafting anything for us.
Recommendation.
Right? He dropped a, a comprehensive plan.
Yeah. No, 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 no. I mean zoning, I mean for zoning. No, obviously, they're gonna draft the comprehensive plan, but they're not drafting the zoning bylaws.
No, they're not gonna be dropping any zoning bylaws.
That's really important for us to understand.
It's going to be.
That's not on them, that's on us. We're the ones who have. Technically, then you do an implementation committee. Some communities, that tends to fall apart historically, many communities. But the whole point is like, we are the zoning jurisdictional entity. We're the ones who are supposed to do this work, so. It's just something to remember, because I feel like sometimes we forget that the comprehensive plan is not gonna be, ooh, here's the plan and a package of bylaws, choose one. It's on us to clean it up.
Yeah, and it's kinda like the housing production plan, except the, you know, it made suggestions about ADUs. It's made suggestions about, yeah, inclusionary zoning. But they didn't, they're not gonna write those bylaws for us, and I think it's like that, except the comprehensive plan is obviously comprehensive. It's not just about housing, so.
We hit the eight forty-five mark.
Hey, we did.
Yeah, I think we hit it.
Yeah, pretty well, actually.
Okay. Do you wanna move on to the guest speakers piece?
Again, I'm not sure, I mean, I'll take anybody's comments, but I'm not sure what's in there besides saying, yep, this is a good list, and we'll probably be adding to it.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to it, I think we do wanna maybe chat with the ZBA at some point. Uh, we may or may not, obviously, the four, relative to the fortyBs, they're gonna hear. That's up to them if they wanna talk to us about the fortyB projects, but in general. I think having a chat with the ZBA about our role versus their role, the intersections of our roles. And frankly, our interests in these topics and bylaws, while it's kinda our thing to plan and rezone this way. They're really helpful, in my opinion, to hearing their thoughts on ADUs and Airbnbs and all this stuff. Even if they're not gonna have jurisdictional power there, it may touch upon their jurisdiction, so I feel like we should get together. Remind ourselves, what do they do? What do we do? What are their interests? What are ours? And how could those things intersect? Like, I would love to hear their thoughts on this list.
Well, it's essentially, it's interesting point because in the same way that we wouldn't go doing a tree bylaw without talking to the sustainability committee. Existing non-conforming, we, we have to talk to the ZBA, cuz they're the ones who are in the conflict about. Okay, this is, this is us trying to follow the bylaw. This is why we have a hard time. This is what's tricky for us, you know. You know, they're gonna have that insider knowledge cuz that's what they do all the time, so.
So that would be just kinda like my addition to that list. Um, the other addition I would have, and this is, I I don't know what you guys think about it, but. I do feel like a lot of what we do touches upon issues of economic policy and we're not economists. And there are state economists, there are, the state has resources like that. There are academics in this area who are economists. I for one would love the opportunity to bring an economist to our board to talk about the region, to talk about Ashland. To gain some perspective on how our work works, because we're oftentimes confronted by the public. Of your, the way you're doing business is going to destroy my business, or the, literally, the way you're making decisions is going to be bad for my company. Or, you know, property owners feeling concerned about impact on property values because of certain projects, and I feel like we pretend to be economists and we're not. But we're being asked to make decisions in a way that touches upon policy and economics. So I for one would like to build a relationship with someone regionally who can come to us with some expertise from time to time. And educate us about the region and actual economic policy so that we're educated when the public says. Whatever the public says, and we're not just kinda pulling things out of thin air.
Beth Reynolds might have a name for us, or a couple names that we could look into. I mean, she has her really, her finger on that kind of.
Yeah, just to follow, um, last week, we had, I had a meeting with Merck, the Metro West. Um, research, economic research center, uh, just wanted to state that, you know, since Deep was here, and she asked me last time. Uh, but, uh. We're, we had a follow-up meeting on a, on a, um. On an economic tool, right, that we were looking at, but obviously, they have a very dense knowledge of research in the area. And I'm starting to build a relationship with tho- them, so I think I could reach out to them, you know, and and maybe it's not on policy per se, right? Or how does this decision, uh, impact, um, a business owner? But at least I think they have the very, they're, they'd be very capable of painting a portrait of, um, Metro West. In the region of Metro West, right? And, you know, I know they, they put out, and I, I, I think I have a copy and I'm happy to send it to everybody. But their two thousand twenty-four, uh, annual report of the Metro West, uh, economic data, right, and I can definitely send that out to you.
Yeah, I think that.
And if that's what you're looking for, I think Merck.
That's a great start.
I think Merck is a tool.
Yeah, if we had a guest who could basically give us the annual report on the economics of the region, how that impacts Ashland, what we as a planning board should be aware of. Maybe comment on some of the work that we do and how that impacts those trends. That would be a great start, for sure.
Yeah, I, I think we can invite them in and see if they can kinda.
Assuming it's free, obviously.
Well, there's not too much in life that's free, Anna.
But like, the point is, let's explore that.
Yeah, I think I could.
They say no.
At the very least, I can, I can obviously send out the report, obviously the Merck report. We could all go home and read it and kinda take a, take a look at it. You know, I think that's definitely in the capacity, um, and and try to have that relationship as we continue to build, right? And I I talked to him last week, like I said, about the economic, uh, impact tool and the development of that tool. Uh, and not just for Ashland, I, I kinda, you know, kinda said that not, not all towns have an economic impact tool, right? And so, you know, if Merck had the ability to develop a tool that could be updated annually and 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 granted indoor. Sent out to, you know, communities or subscribing communities within the region, that'd be something obviously of 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 interest, right? And I think they'd be interested in this board, but for the town and also funny towns, but I think we could start there on that kind of bullet point.
Yeah, we have the resource, we might as well.
Yeah, and they're local. They're the Rams, right, Mark? That's right, Farming State.
And I look at this list, I kind of have the same thought as I had about the bylaw work, which is to take some of the things that have been like top of mind and see if we can get.
Close them?
Close them or have folks in, you know, when things get, when everyone's sort of back in the groove in the fall. But for me, that would be the Ashland Cultural Council, cuz I just, I don't wanna lose, you know, there was a lot of behind-the-scenes sort of commentary on Starbucks. I, it's, I feel like the recency of it, people seem to love the idea of it, right, which is great. And if we can keep including it, but I think we hit these points in the projects where it's tricky, and I don't know that we wanna lose the, um. The like immediacy around what the issues were as we implemented the first one. I think it would be useful to sort of tie up any loose ends around that or get any feedback on that when we're so close to it.
Yeah, it would be really good to maybe talk to the cultural council, like, okay, we put this thing in our, in our approval. Tell us how it went from your end.
Your life.
What did you do? Where were the problems? Where can we help it be better, or maybe it's out of our hands, I don't know. But to have the conversation, not just to say, oh, well, that worked good, let's do it again, right, kinda thing?
Board, we're inclined to want to do those, if they're in a way that's feasible, right? I think we've hit questions. In subsequent projects as sort of concerns with the Starbucks mirror bubbling up that, you know, should we just, like, can we put it in? Should we put it in at all? Should we say anything about it? How do we say it? Um, so I would just love to get, like, out in the air, like. Pros, cons, what went well, what worked, what didn't, like, so we can sort of know going forward, and I feel like the closer we are to that, the better, and that. So that would be a priority for me for the fall, and the other one would be the historical commission. Um, I think the forming of the historic district, like. In light of what we encounter with like the downtown fortyB, um, even with like the, the Clover Road project where we wanted that signage. Like stuff that keeps bubbling up, like this, the idea of the district, the idea of consistent sort of signs or markings, the things that we. That we value or that we wanna bring to projects, I feel like would be great to touch base with them on and get.
Yeah, it would be that, hey, we have these ideas, are are you working on any kind of signage like this? Cuz we would love to be able to.
Have that.
Yeah, to be able to say, hey, the historic commission wants to do this, it's required for the project, you know, versus us saying. We order the historic commission to do this, which we can't do, right, to have it already in process. I wanted to make one comment about the, um, the cultural council, cuz I mentioned a letter at a previous meeting. That I received from the cultural council, and I realized it didn't, I found the letter, it didn't go to me as the. At the planning board, it went to me as the CPC. So it was a letter from the cultural council to the CPC, and that's why I got. This letter, and it was really about, um, um, you know, funding. These are type of projects we do, this is type of funding, sometimes we're looking for, you know, type of thing. So I wanted to, I I didn't remember the time where I got the letter, but but that's why the, I received and the board did not, so.
And then I, I would obviously, I would personally be prioritizing the select board, but that's in process, so.
Yes.
Going on the calendar.
Yes, and I I think that is, people should put their, I I, I think they're saving their rooms for September twenty-third. It's a Monday. It seemed to be a day. I'm sure in the end, someone won't make it because that's just how things go, but it seemed like that would be the day, and it took that long to. It took two months to find a day where hopefully all of us could be there, so. Um, they are looking, I should also mention, they are also looking at that day. And it kinda comes back to the MB, this this timeline for MBA to communities that maybe. That meeting would be twofold, half of it would be about. Get to know you and half of it would be about the joint meeting for the MBTA communities. Given how hard it is to give us both in one room, cuz it's around the same timeframe, so.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, it's not really what I was.
Combination of things.
I was hoping it'd be just a.
Hey, how are you?
Yeah, that's not, for the record, that's not gonna go well.
I know, but, uh, yeah. But I think realistically, like in, in trying, in trying to get the work of the boards done, right? Which one gets priority, the, so it's not, it's not set in stone yet, but just to give people a heads up that it might be half a working meeting. Out of necessity, so.
If we're just slipping on that, this, if this is like a public discussion in August, like, we have to be publicizing that now. Summer vacations, we already experienced at our own boards, that if we ever want people to attend. On August twenty-seventh, it has to be widespread.
Having that, we can start putting that out there, I think, in the town newsletter.
Like, I think there really needs to be a strong publicity to.
Well, what's strong publicity to? What does that include? Like specifically?
Well, I don't.
Being on the newsletter and what else?
Helps, I mean, the website, we can put it on the board agenda, mention it.
Yeah, we can get that newsletter.
Yeah, cuz I mean, I, you know, I generally get my news from the newsletter, you know? Um, so I'm like, if people aren't getting their news from the newsletter, where are they getting it? I don't know. Someone needs to tell us, right, so.
I think people get it from some of the Facebook groups, but I also prioritize the newsletter.
Yeah, so I think we can put it on the Ashland Facebook page, um, you know, and hopefully people have that clicked and so it goes into their Facebook. So. So, but yeah, we can start, um, putting that out there. Um, we think that's a pretty solid date, but we can just also put a heads up. Please be watching for these public forums. Okay, so what about, um, anything else on joint meetings, guest speakers? Um, and obviously, I think other things will come in as we. As, as we interact with them. Sometimes we think of new things. Process and procedures, um. Can we start with comprehensive plan there? Cuz we have been talking about comprehensive plan. I got the impression that this was about. Where does. I got the impression that this was about where does the planning board and the comprehensive plans during committee intersect, is that?
Um, I, I'm not, I know I put this on, Anna might have as well, but it's the conversation that Anna had earlier that there will be no zoning changes coming out of the plan, but there will be recommendations.
Yeah.
The things that are very obvious now, like in the vision and the themes, we do not have to wait another year. We would be remiss as a community to just pretend that nothing needs to be looked at now, and could be. And the planning board, having zoning jurisdiction needs to be part of it and start kind of pushing that along, I think.
Being a part of what?
Zoning changes, and, and.
Like, the zoning changes, we, like such as the ones we've discussed, uh, at, at the beginning, uh, in the first part, is that what you mean? I'm just trying to get the specifics about what you're saying.
It, it's, I would say the simplest thing is what Anna reminded, that they can go parallel, they do not have to wait to end.
Yeah, and I don't think, I, it's, I certainly hope it wasn't, and maybe it was me that implied that we should wait for comprehensive plan, but never have I thought that we have to sit on our hands until that thing is done. It's more about those big decisions about rezoning things, you know? Makes me a little hesitant to see what's coming out of that, like to, some, some of the bigger moves, the little moves, no, I'm not. Uh, that's not what I'm concerned about, I'm worried, worried about the bigger moves that I think the comprehensive plan, I assumed was kind of all about, what, what's our big directions, right? And those are the ones I was hesitant to.
I agree, that's the same page that I was on, and I, and I'm not saying, like, I know we're still a year out from, like, everything written and formalized and all those things, and we might have a vision and things like that, which I think we're gonna get updates on jointly with the SLAC board at some point soon. I think for some of us who aren't as intimately like aware of what those themes are that are coming out, like, it would be helpful to, once we have something pretty concrete, where they say, this isn't probably, this isn't really gonna change much, like, this is, this is the input, this is the feedback, like, these are the, these are the themes, we can take some direction from that, and I don't, I personally don't feel strongly that it has to be like completely done and dusted as a comp.
Totally agree.
Loaded on and approved, in order for us to start putting things into the works, because of how long things take. I do think that, like, I would love to see those things. And like right now, I think for some of us who aren't, you know, at, at every steering committee meeting, the way that you guys are, it's probably less clear to us what those things are. And so, once they come to us and we do have that joint update, I feel like it would, it will feel easier and better to sort of start taking some of those themes forward.
I, I look at it as more, I, I agree with what you're saying, I also think there's a piece of it that is slightly different in my view, which is that the planning board plans and has zoning responsibility and is the one that has a vital role in the comprehensive plan, and so technically, it's a back and forth relationship in my mind. So I look at it, when I say it's congruent, what I'm saying is, we as a planning board have a responsibility to be the, the organization, the board in the town, that should know what zoning changes should be happening. And we should be delivering that information and expertise to the comprehensive plan committee to help the process work more efficiently. It should be a back and forth, and at the same time, the public feedback that they're gathering through the really important public engagement comes back to us. I look at it as a conversation that's happening congruently. I don't look at it as they decide which zoning to do and that's what we do. I look at it as a, a back and forth, a communication, which is why you have two planning board members on the committee, so that that conversation can be ongoing, so to me, it's much more of a partnership, not necessarily a us telling them what to do or them telling us what to do.
I, I think for, I think for me, though, it's like, um, you know, there are things that, like, like you said, that we have these, okay, that, um, ADUs and, um, um, Airbnbs, these are kind of, uh, hot topics, we need to kind of, hey, comprehensive plan, these are kind of hot topics, we need, we need, as the planning board needs to deal with, because it's in our purview and they're very of today, right? On the other hand, when we talk about the, the two boards, I see like the, the steering committee is Ashland with this huge body, carefully chosen for different districts, different committees, and we're five people. And so I'm ve, I'm, for one, very conscious of that difference of five, six with Amanda, sorry, six people on a board and the town of Ashland making a decision about its comprehensive plan, coming from the people, coming from the residents. So I am a little hesitant, I'm, I'm not quite as a, I'm not quite thinking this is a kind of an equal partnership. I'm like, we're the, we're the board that has to get it done, right? But you're, you're Ashland, which is also us, we are Ashland, right?
Like, there's people on the comprehensive plan that have expertise in like elder affairs, and their job is to bring that perspective. So we, as the planning board members, have a responsibility to bring the planning perspective to the comprehensive plan committee.
It's true, it's just that we just have to remember that the, the zoning bylaws are passed by the residents, not by the planning board.
But it's the planning board that drabs zoning changes, it's the only board in town that has that jurisdiction. And so it's a, it's a back and forth, and I guess what I'm, what I'm reiterating is, we have to remember our responsibility is zoning, and therefore, that is what we need to deliver to the comprehensive plan committee. We have to be able to communicate very clearly, we're not the sustainability committee, we're not the elder care folks, we are the planning board, and so therefore, when the comprehensive plan committee talks about zoning, it's Kate and I that have to be able to communicate. We, the planning board, have looked into this, and this is what we've learned.
Yeah.
Not that we voted for zoning change, but we, as the com, as the planning board, have knowledge base on ADUs, and here's what we can deliver to you, because that's our thing, that we can deliver to you as the comprehensive plan committee, so that you, you have our research, you have our information to make the decisions to create priorities, right? But we, as a planning board, are the ones that are supposed to have that knowledge base, that's why Kate and I are in the room to do that, so.
I, I think, I completely agree with that, I think what, um, and I don't want to see if you're to show, I think, but I think we might be aligned, like, on just the order of operations, where like, for me, on some of the bigger picture things that we haven't really delved in too much yet, I would like to like, or bigger picture conceptual things, I would, I personally feel like we would be remiss to not take the opportunity to hear from this very large community board when we're like within months of like having a pretty final vision, to say, hey, planning board, these are the things that our community cares about. They're zoning-ish things, please go look at them, come back with your expertise and start to have that conversation. I don't want to be making a list for the town before I hear, like, I, I don't want to go the wrong direction on that part of the conversation. So I'd rather, for like ADUs, for Airbnbs, for the tree present, some of the stuff that like is in the works is existing, and we know as a community, we're gonna get caught out, like, if we're, if we're not ready for it, that feels very different to me than some of the bigger picture conceptual things, like hotels downtown, which like, that's a big community conversation that I feel like we want to hear from the community through, via the comp plan, which is, if it, if we were fifteen years away from our next comp plan, that would feel very different. But we are like in the thick of it right now, where we are gonna get some clear direction pretty soon, and I feel like taking some of the cues as to what the community wants to prioritize that might be within our realm, and then we take our notes from that, develop our expertise around it and go back to the comp plan with it, makes perfect sense. But for me, I, I think I want to leverage that community body to be able to be telling us a little bit about what's important.
Because it seems like, when we always talked about the comprehensive, that we didn't have a up-to-date comprehensive plan, so the planning board didn't have this thing to refer to in making our decisions, which is the agreement of the town about what the town wants. And so that's why I'm like, well, where's, where's the thing I can refer to, like, oh, this is what the town voted for, versus, oh, I put in there what I wanted, you know, it, it seems backwards, right?
We build the comp plan as like, this is the vision for Ashland for the next twenty, thirty years, right? I don't want to, I don't want to take the legs out from under that and do something really big picture that, uh, from a zoning change perspective. And when we've said we want the vehicle for the vision for Ashland for the next twenty to thirty years to be the comp plan, like, I want those big, I would personally like to see those sort of big vision items that then will fall under zoning, because we, I think we all understand, no one's gonna tee up a bylaw for us. But the conceptual stuff for, to basically tell us, this is what the town wants, is what the community wants, planning board, go do your job and figure out how to do it.
I want to be clear that, uh, like you, I've thought of it as a twenty to thirty year thing. But in fact, it's been referred by, by folks as ten to fifteen. So, um, right now, I think it's fairly confusing to the community what the number is. And I would have to go back to the original work plan that was given to the consultant to give you the right answer. But I, I just wanted to clarify that if you're thinking of it as twenty to thirty years, that's not.
Long term.
Yeah, that's not necessarily how it was presented to the community.
Ten, twenty, thirty, I'll feel quite.
Somehow that got.
It got a little cut down. But I, I guess, I guess to your point, if we were planning for thirty years, I might have very different feelings about this list than if we were planning for ten to fifteen, so I just want to be very clear that.
So I could amend my comment and take the number of years away, but say that it has been built to the town as like the vision for the town of Ashland, like what you want to see the town of Ashland become, so for me, that still means that the, some of the big picture conceptual items, like, I don't want to take them to the comp plan before the comp plan tells us it's something that the community wants to prioritize, and I think that's different from, and then I think we do have to go do that work. When the, when, when we're told by the community, this is what they want to prioritize, we need to.
I guess for me, I've already heard the public through the comprehensive plan process focus on downtown revitalization so much that I'm already thinking about what that means, and to me, the downtown thing is worth exploring, the downtown hotels, because that is already being discussed, not as a, the hotels thing is a solution to the priority. But the priority of revitalization and business and entrepreneurship and creating downtown businesses and all of that kind of for me is like, oh, obviously, we should think about hotels, because we should think about what could be the potential, so. Yeah, the comprehensive plan is not yet at a phase of what are the twenty possible solutions that could solve revitalization downtown? It's just, I'm starting to think that way, because the public is already saying revitalization downtown, jobs, growth, et cetera, so. And history, and trees, right? So to me, it's all interrelated already to what I believe we're hearing at the comprehensive plan. It's just like thinking ahead to what is our job, not the consultant, which is drafting. Um, but to your point, like, nobody's gonna be voting for any of this stuff until there's a thorough public process, thorough feedback from the public and a vote that has zero to do with us and more to do with town. So, you know, it has to be passed a town meeting, it's not our decision. We just have to reflect the values of what we're hearing, and I don't look at this as a definitive list of what we're gonna approve. I look at this as like worth exploring for a continued conversation between ourselves with the comprehensive plan committee, with the public, exploration of those values, um, and maybe rezoning eventually. The little bit I've seen from us, it takes us forever to rezone, so realistically, none of these things will happen until years after the comprehensive plan process.
And I think that's exactly where, where my thought process is, it's like, I think this list could get five or ten things longer based on impact, but based on feedback from the comp plan, right? And so, and it, and it will, and it should, and so we're so close to having that, that I feel like, and how long things take, I feel like let's tackle, like, the ones that don't.
I think it's just we're exploring some, some smaller issues and some bigger issues, and we're exploring them, and, um, we realize that some are low-hanging fruit probably, and some aren't, and that, and that's okay to have things on different scales, you know? Um, is there anything else on that top half? I mean, I don't think, um.
So the, um, the implementation, I, I think it, it may not solely rest with us, but I think, I mean, not to go backwards, but the last time there was comprehensive plan process, it was stopped by the planning board. Um, people talk about it sitting on the shelf, we, I've worked, given way too much time to see that happen. I think the other twenty-eight people part of it have given too much time to see that happen. But if we're not proactive about that, that could kind of sort of happen, because we weren't ahead enough of that. And I, I feel like the planning board can offer, not, not to again, to say we're doing it this way, because it's bigger than us, but I think.
Yeah, well, there's a conversation that the planning board has with the steering committee process about when we get to that point about, okay, well, how do these things happen? Like, let's talk to the planning board, because they're the ones that make zoning changes, great, yeah, let's do it. You know, about how, how does, how do this board, whoever's sitting in these seats, you know, how do we make that process where we, we make these things happen based on the book that's in front of us, that's not on the shelf, that's on our table? Right? I, I think that's ideal, you know, that's, that's the.
But the reality is, if to really do this, like, it will, it will be bigger than the six of us, in my opinion.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying, you just talked about the involvement to the planning board, so that's why I'm talking about the involvement to the planning board.
I'm just thinking implementation best practices have us starting to brainstorm recommendations of that back to the committee in the way Anna was talking about that conversation, like, we've done some thinking about it and research, we think this is some things to consider.
I guess I would need, um, um, maybe to see some things from other committees, I don't even know what that list looks like, I don't know, I don't know.
That's what I think I'm saying, as part of, that's what, well, I was like, I would like to see where the, where they are, because I think we're so much more disconnected.
Well, I mean, like, best practice, like, I don't know what, like, if, if, if there's examples from other comprehensive plans about best practices, because I don't even know what your question you're asking me, and so if I had a list of, oh, well, we have, we have tea parties and, and we have, uh, meetings and we, like, like, I, I don't know what that means. So if I saw a list of what best practices are, I'm like, oh, well, I have some other ideas in that category, but I can't even tell you what that means, so.
So, I mean, I guess that, that's the conversation, do we think that's worthwhile, the planning board putting effort to start looking at implementation to produce something to give to the steering committee?
Sure, I think I would like to see it, if that's something that.
How other communities have done it?
Yeah, if, if we're obviously the board that, that, um, implements, or, you know, that has the process to make zoning changes, and that will be something, we are looking, we want to be looking at this book as a guide for our work. Um, I would both take information about what best practices planning board should have, because I don't know, and I would be willing to add to that list if I have other ideas that aren't already on the list. So I think that would be a good thing to start educating the planning board about, about that, about what happens after this book is complete and on the table, you know? I think that's a great idea. So fiscal impact tool, I, I think we have, uh, not to cut off the comprehensive plan, but watching our time. Um, I think Peter's kind of on that.
Yeah, I just gave an update, obviously, I had a meeting with Merck last week, and actually, I email, emailed it up, and I'll send it out.
So, and we'll continue to work toward, I think what you're talking about, Kate, is to have something that's consistently used, that's as accurate as such a tool can be, so that we have a means to compare things, and I think that's part of kind of your ongoing education of to, like, how do we, how can we get to this?
How do you get to this point, you know, I think.
When other communities seem to be perhaps behind us rather than ahead of us.
Yeah, I think we had a good tool that was developed by economists, by econ, by economists when we did service. There's so many nuances in that tool, how does it apply to all projects? I don't think it could be, and or can be, so I think that's kind of a goal of a fiscal impact tool is to take it and say, okay, how does this apply across the board, right? And, and that's what I'm talking to Merck about, and so a couple of their prof, two of their professors, you know, that's who I was talking to last week. And so they're still in that process to kind, and they're interested and they're engaged, because part of their purpose, right, is to help serve the region, right, as a economic, you know, economic hub of information at Framing of State. So that's ongoing, and obviously, it's, 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 it's moving forward, I know it's slow, but I think it's a very, it's a tough nut to crack at the end of the day.
Yeah, so the last category, I think the planning board processes are, are definitely, um, things that have, it, it's kind of like a checklist of things that we have talked about, you know, over the past year or so, um, so good for you, Kate, for actually keeping maybe track of them. Um, or kind of brainstorming as to what all these things were that we, that we talked about, um.
So I, I actually printed, I think I forgot to bring other stuff, it, it was simply, um, it was from like a regional planning best practices, right? One piece of paper, it, I, I'm actually probably glad I didn't bring as well, because people get distracted, this is. One piece of paper. It, I, I'm actually probably glad I didn't bring it as well, because people get distracted. This isn't appropriate. But it literally had like, the application came in, here's when the ninety days comes up, when I ask for continuances. And we would make our own. I, I just, but I like the idea, because I feel like that could also be public to say, the, the long breaks are bothersome for everyone, in my opinion. And certainly, public trying to pay attention. So, trying to be the most transparent and communicative about them. Like, did the applicant ask for one? Did we ask for one, right?
So, there's like a, 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 a document, or a list online, or a page for each project?
Yeah.
That kind of just, it kinda just spells it out. It's like, it's, it's.
Project cheat sheets.
Right, project cheat sheet.
It's got a review with our third party. I, I personally, I like checklist, and I would make it complete. Right? And some things are NA, 'cause it's never gonna go to the conservation commission, right?
Right.
But, um, and it's never gonna go to the traffic, and we say no. But like, it's, as you know, somewhat easy to lose track of, like, we, we've been at the pinch point of projects, realizing we didn't get that last letter back. Right? And we have to be scrambling. It's happened, so I feel like that would help with that.
Yeah, so do you, you, you kinda suggest that maybe there was a sample letter you found that might be a useful starting point, not finish?
You guys would be saying this is too much. I, so I'm glad I didn't bring it away. I, I will, I can email it.
Okay. I think it's always good to have a starting point, even if you say, well, this is five times bigger than.
You will see what I'm thinking about, but you could also get distracted and say, 'cause it's not really what I'm thinking. It's a, it's both. I think ours should be just very, I don't know, like, the example has like, when did I get the application? When was the thing published? And I don't know if we need to collect all those.
Right.
Um, but maybe.
This might be a terrible analogy, but it's almost like the Domino's pizza tracker, but for a project, but for us. Because I, I've recently seen a ton of community questions bubble up about like, sorry, I love that thing.
I kinda wanna know what the Domino's pizza tracker is, I'm not gonna lie. No, please enlighten me, I'm not gonna lie.
Exactly what fees your, your order is, and it's amazing.
I know how to clean a rug, and I know how to order, I know how to follow a pizza.
Pissing a man to came to us.
I'm kinda hungry right now, we've got twenty minutes, you know?
Yeah, we, there is a new one in, in Hop- I just, I haven't ordered it, yeah. Um, I haven't used the Domino's pizza tracker in a long time, 'cause there's not, Domino's delivers to my address in Ashland. But it's one, anyway, having sort of a very clear, like, visual of like, where is a project in its lifecycle? 'Cause I have seen a lot of community questions bubble up recently about like, hey, whatever happened to the firehouse project, or what's going on with the Y?
YMCA. Yeah.
And like, to be able to see on our webpage, like, okay, this was, this is approved. This is now like, in the applicant's
Yeah.
corner to build it, or like, to get, but get building permits and finish.
Or six nuts, chestnut tree, that came up recently, like, where's this?
There was a question around the firehouse. There was a question around, like, you know, all these things where it, it can be like, you know, this is not, the planning board approve this on this date, or it's, it's paused, because the applicant requested a, a continuance on this date, you know, and it hasn't come back before the board. Um, I feel like that's a real, would be incredibly useful.
I think it's a great idea.
So, and part of that is, I didn't really bring it up, but it's, I think it is related, like, how can we do a better job of publicity? And we don't have a ton of time to spend doing it, right? And it, it takes time, 'cause I've been working hard for it in the comprehensive plan, and it's a lot of time, right, to try to just do my part for the publicity. But I feel like at least having it, and then educating people it's there, might, might be something.
I, I think to me, that's it. Like, it's there, um, it's there for us, it's there for the community. Um, we might have to remind people that it's there, but if they go looking, it is there for them.
It's easier made.
It's easy to read, it's easy to comprehend, because even if you go to our website, and it's, it's, it's organized, but there is a lot there. It's super overwhelming, right?
You have to know what you're looking for. You have to really understand the documents that are there. And I think there are members of the community who put that work in and understand it, but I think it's a great idea. I think it would be a useful tool both for us and for the community.
So, are we looking, we're not looking for a document list, we're looking for actual step in the.
Kind of, but it's sort of.
Like a combo.
Yeah. I sent a couple to Kate just now that I found, I mean, in other Massachusetts towns, so.
Yeah.
It, it's not gonna be impossible to start somewhere, like, that, that stuff exists. We just need to create it for Ashland. Because our bylaws are different in our process.
I think I, I can help put that together.
I mean, do, so I guess one question is, do we need it and want it as detailed as they applied on, that it got published on? That, the one I have has that, and I'm torn on that, but.
I think some of that stuff, which is in the realm of, like, how I put it, is, is not what we or the public needs. Like, that to me would be distracting from the real things that I think they do.
You wanna update on the website?
You know?
Like, a public hearing was on, like, for Twenty Fourth Tower Road, you could say, public, you know, July twenty-fifth. You know, public hearing opened, uh, you know, information taken in, planning board continued to August twenty-second. There's a bullet point under the case, on our case website, to say like, where it is, or like.
It could also be a document that's in our binder.
And that's what.
If that's what you're looking for, then you're like, then that's a different story, you know?
It could be a combination. I mean, I think that, to Kate's point, it sounds like you want the public to be aware of where the project is. To my point, I want us to also be know what's going on.
Well, that's fine. I think it's in your binder, it's not a problem. I think that can lie on me, and I can, I can help work that process through, you know? I think if it's on the website, it's just that, you know, we're doing a lot in the day-to-day basis and the stuff. It's like, what, what do we need, what we want?
What we could do on the website is just put up our general plan.
But could you scan that document when we update? If we have a document, can that be scanned to add? I don't know.
I guess I was imagining, I didn't, there, we have site plan, and we have special permits. Each one is gonna have a checklist. That checklist is a general checklist for any project. That should be publicized. At, at a minimum. So, the public knows, the planning board and applicants know, these are the checklist steps we expect. Then, when a project starts, that's the first date on any, any checklist, right? I don't know if we need to constantly at every meeting, scan it for the public, as long as we're tracking it ourselves, and we have that as part of the record in some way.
Yeah.
I think it's a lot of work to have to scan it at every meeting.
Cause then you're scanning, you're updating, you're uploading the website, it's a, it turns into be a.
I think it's almost two different things that we're talking about. I think there's a, something that would be in our binders, it's a little bit more detailed. And then something that's like super distilled, as like a project status tracker on our website, which is like, like, show, ba- basically like phases of the, of the project lifecycle.
Yeah, like, public hearing open, public hearing closed, decision rendered, because.
That's more like a timeline.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, there's two ways, um, is that everybody sort of bring examples, or send them to me, and I'll try to call, cause I, like, there's a lot of ideas, and that's why I didn't try to actually create something, 'cause it's simple and complicated, so.
I mean, it sounds like there's a pattern that Peter knows as to which groups, you know, need to clear every project. So, if Peter can give you that list, that, that seems like an important list, the list of like.
I think it makes sense for, for Kate to share.
Fire department, whatever.
You, you know, share what's going on, you know, what she's looking for, you know, and then I can manipulate it and say, okay, nope, this is the, this is the processes, the procedures we kinda have in Ashland. You know, how it comes in, when it gets stamped in, but also, when's the precon- you know, when's the, is there a departmental review meeting? You could say check, be held.
Those.
Obviously memo issued.
Did we get the memo from the tech review meeting?
A hundred percent.
Like, I just.
And so.
Design review.
I guess, like, we're just, I just wanna be able to say we got it or not.
So, maybe the thing is to, that really, first of all, we formulate one list, and that's the list for us, what we wanna keep track of. Then it's like, okay, how do we, we can simplify this for the public, right? Like, what do they wanna know when they?
That's cool.
They probably don't, you know, and we're like, okay, not this, and yes, these three things, you know?
When we got a project, like, you know, when we opened the public hearing, can, you know, this is out, this is a continuance that the applicant requests, it's a, it's, you think of some projects where we said, you know, we need drawings, and we don't get drawings for three months, or whatever it is.
Yeah.
People can see that that's a applicant needed continuance, and the project is stopped for that right now, that's not for the board at the moment, or.
I think that's really important.
For the next hearing, yeah. And then, or, you know, all the way through completion, where it's like, this is approved by the planning board, it is now off in its life as a project, should have come to fruition.
Yeah.
So, let's focus on the document for us, and then we'll.
So, can people, I guess that people have to send suggestions to Peter for the list back to me? Is that?
I'll send what I can to both of you.
Yeah, it's easy.
I think you can both be emailed ideas on this.
Like, for the memorandum, things went to me, and.
Or just Peter, so we don't have a violation of open meeting law.
That's what I'm saying, send it. So, you could send it just to me?
As long as it's just going in one direction.
Yeah, this isn't, we're not talking about here, and we're not talking about there.
It's procedural.
It's a procedural page.
That's true, it's procedural, so it can all involve you.
Com- comments of things you think we need to keep track of, and I will try to make it in some sort of.
Sure.
Preliminary list to look at to clean up. But I'm excited about that you all agree for this.
We've got OCD, all of us, we're all into it. It's like people's personalities and.
I'm, it's not even OCD, it's just making it easier, I think, is like.
You disagree?
I don't know if I have OCD.
Okay, he does not. Just the rest of us. I'm talking about the board.
I like to keep my car clean, but like, it's kinda like, eh.
Peter literally looks concerned, I don't have it.
Peter's chill.
How dare you imply?
You notice he's not protesting, right?
He did protest to us. He's like, I'm fine.
I put the white flag up.
All of us should be a little more like Peter, is what I'm saying. We'd probably be much happier, and have a much better work-life balance.
For me, it is actually to make it easier, so you don't have to like, you don't have to remember, you don't have to like, you just.
In my job, we're in the middle of an internal company implementation, and we have things like matrices, and, you know, um, things like that. So, at least we're not doing that, Peter. We don't have a project matrix. That's Google, Google share.
Unless, unless anyone is really, like, if there's really something that needs to be discussed, that people are like, man, I really wanted to talk about our outdoor dining, you know, or something, I, I think, given that it's nine-thirty, we, can we go on to the?
I think this was really good, yeah. I'm, I'm on both.
Okay. Is there anything that needs to be like?
So, I feel like the concept, we all agree with these things, and that's why we put it at the end. And I feel like the way to do this is to start seeing them on the agenda, and even if it's small, right? Like, like, the review of the decision document template. I know you more or less have that handled, Trish. I'm not super worried, but I guess I put it because I don't want to put that all on you as the chair. I feel like we have collective responsibility.
Um, I, I guess I, I mean, are you looking for an agenda topic that says how to make meetings more efficient, and that's our agenda topic?
No, uh, no, but I feel like that should be another retreat. But, um, no, I said the review of the decision document template. So, that could be an agenda item, and we could spend, we said we're gonna spend fifteen or twenty minutes and look through that, or do we want any more changes? For example.
Yeah, we, we could. I mean, it, if, if we have some of these slow, you know, some of these empty meetings, we could do that. It would require people to really take a close look at those things in advance.
Yeah.
Um, so, that's fine, if people wanna do it, yeah.
I mean, the tighter they are, and you spend some time in advance, the easier they are when we get to a decision.
That's true. That's true. There's definitely some things I've been.
We all have the thing that we go back to every time, with our powers combined.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so we'll start looking to. Yeah, I mean, some of the, these things are like application status. It seems like that's already covered in the, what we just talked about.
It's kinda covered.
Long, best practices, but yeah, so it's like, some of these are maybe tied into that document, um, but other things, um, yeah, I think a lot of them are tied into the document, but, but others aren't, like the, like the template, so.
Are you thinking it'd be helpful to talk about how to make our meetings more efficient?
Yeah.
Um, as far as timing, and I feel like sometimes we're inconsistent. We give certain, like, typically, we wanna hear from the applicant, we wanna hear from the public. Sometimes we, we take questions, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we have a back and forth with applicants, sometimes we don't. I do wonder at some point if we wanna come up with, again, I don't wanna use the word best practices and overuse it, but like, in the ideal world, if we have three projects on an agenda, how much time do we give it to project? How do, how do we decide how much time to give it to project? And how do we maintain that level of continuation so that our meetings don't go off until ten o'clock at night? Not that I'm against that, sometimes it's necessary. And I don't wanna like, say, ooh, we can't do that when it's necessary, because we gotta meet a deadline. So, obviously, projects sometimes have to happen within a certain amount of time, and, and we need to do what we need to do. But I do feel like it's worthwhile at some point to like brainstorm the timing of our work, and how we wanna contain it. Sometimes, no offense to certain applicants, I'm just like, why do I need to hear this? I can read it. Like, or, um, sometimes there's more of a benefit to like, an open conversation with the applicant from the get-go, and less of an introduction. Um, sometimes I feel like some of the applicants, it's almost like a marketing thing. Like, wait, I'm not, I'm not gonna be the one living in this apartment. Like, I don't need to know about the amenities for the public, like, that's gonna live there. I need to hear about the design and the zoning. Like, sometimes I feel like we, we are almost not aware of time, and then it's like, ten, ten o'clock.
I, I think it's, I mean, coming from my perspective about having to schedule these things over the past three years, that, um, it's just not, I think things are getting better, right, in how we're organizing things, a- absolutely, and they can't always get better yet. But to try to set up some kind of template that's gonna work like every week, and for every project, to me, it's like, I, I don't see how that's happening. To me, it's more about, um, where I think that clarity is, is about, again, it puts on more on the chair and potentially the vice chair, to look at the project before it comes to the planning board, to see if we wanna even put it on our agenda, or if it's ready, like.
That's kinda was under my thing, like, a process, because I feel like that's dogged us a lot, right?
Yeah, well, sometimes it's hard, because it's like, Peter's looking at the stuff, but he's not an architect, right? I, I can look at the stuff and say, well, what's that? What's this? What's that? Right? And so, is that, does that become my job, right, that? And what if there's a chair that's not an architect, who isn't going to pick up on the things that I'm gonna pick up on, right?
Yeah, whether something is ready is really perception, too.
Yeah, so, um, so it's tricky in that way, and that's what makes every project a little bit different, right? Um, and hard to, and it is different, how you're gonna schedule, when you have to have three public hearings in a meeting because of circumstances, and when you only have one. Those are two very different meetings.
I mean, honestly, having a checklist that Kate is talking about will, will help us.
I agree.
Because if we have a checklist, and it's transparent to the applicant, then that will guide us, and the meetings can become much more efficient. Like, where are you in the checklist? What are we focused on today? I guess for me, what I'm suggesting is, I'm not criticizing the way we've been doing it. I think we've done everything to become more efficient, and we've made massive improvements in our process. I think what I'm saying is, what else can we squeeze out? I'm thinking about the presentations themselves from the applicants. I find can be way shorter and way to the point of what we need. And the stuff, there's a lot of extra stuff that they throw in, because they're trying to sell the project to us, rather than go for what we actually need. How could we make that better? Maybe, maybe there needs to be a conversation with the applicant ahead of time, as to, our expectation when you present is that you focus us on the zoning. Here's the zoning pieces that apply. We don't need to hear about the beauty of this project and the marketing for the community. You're not trying to sell this to us. We need to hear the bylaw applic- applicability. Give us that. Then if you wanna fluff it up with some extras, have fun. But at a minimum, they should start their presentations with, this is the zoning that applies, this is how we fit the project. Like, give me what I actually need for my decision, rather than frankly, it takes them like multiple presentations sometimes to get to what actually matters. Um.
Yeah, I think we need to be careful. I mean, I, I agree partly, because I think, you know, for different projects, but I also think, um, there is a lot, in a big project, there is a lot of information that I want on day one, and I don't want it in three sentences. I want it to hear it in detail, right?
And I think it's important for the public to understand some of the conceptual stuff.
Yeah. Versus, I don't wanna comment on it before I hear all about it, right? And other times, I think, because we have questions, we veer off on a tangent, and we have a big discussion about something else, versus saying, nope, we're not gonna discuss, um, affordable, affordability right now, 'cause that's not, that's not the presentation. We're gonna discuss that in two of, two more meetings when we get there, but that's not, maybe not what people are gonna think, different things in the board. Affordable is really important to me. I wanna discuss it today. No, I wanna discuss sustainability. So, it's gonna be really hard to, to keep that on track. But I agree with the zoning. How does your project deal with the zoning?
Yeah, that should be, in my opinion, the sooner we get to that, the better, because it grounds us, and it organizes where we believe as a board, we, we have weaknesses in the project, very, very quickly.
Is there a way to almost give like an outline with suggested time that we want to see from an applicant? Like, I don't know whether we do that, but.
We have given them like, okay, you have twenty minutes for your presentation, or whatever it was, over, and for a big project, like, for a big project, for someone who, you know, like, that is not a. For a big project, for someone who, you know, like, that is not a lot of time on a project this size.
And, and, but I'm wondering if within that, just to sort of address. I think some of the big picture stuff is helpful and useful to say like, okay, what is this, like, you know, what are we talking about, what are we doing, what does it look like? Because I think we actually do get into the nitty gritty of like, where is the tree gonna go and is there a bench and like that, so like, if we completely.
Yeah.
Have them like not give us an overview at all at the beginning, I think we'll end up having more convoluted conversations later. But I do wonder if we can say at the opening of a project, here is, you know, we are affording you twenty minutes. And we would really like, you know, three minutes of like a flyover of the project, of like a really good look at the exterior, we would like you to jump to the zoning. Quickly and, and focus for ten minutes on that and then we would like, you know. You to move on and sort of wrap up with your conclusion and any concluding remarks for, and sort of give like in parentheses, like how much time we expect them to spend on each thing. To be able to say like, this is what we value, we don't want you to just completely gloss over this, we, and, and, and we will spend time, we are a thorough board, but like, this is. In the interest of time, this is the starting place and then we're gonna take it to questions.
I think, I think, I think there could be some general guidelines, you know, like that, knowing that. That presentation isn't gonna cover all the information we're gonna want.
Sure.
And we're all gonna have to be patient saying, okay, yeah, I'd like to talk about sustainability, but they're not gonna be able to get to it today. Because we've asked them to do these other things, right?
And to be able to say like, this is. Do you have those conversations with the applicant, cause you seem to know, cause that's the first time I've heard of it, they, there's this plan and that would be helpful to know.
Well, no, I mean, it's not, it's not that specific, Peter and I, when we've had three public hearings, we've said. And, you know, I've said, tell them that they can have no more than twenty minutes to present, this is like maybe when we have an hour for that project. They can, no more than twenty minutes, you know, so, but I haven't given thing like, oh, focus on the bylaws or spend three minutes on this. Hasn't been anything more than that, like, you get this amount of time and then we're going to questions from the board.
I think it's remiss on us not to say what's important, at least try.
Yeah, but I think we also, like, when we did, when we were doing the ten to sixty million project, you know, which at, at this point was all virtual. There were some nights where it was like, hey, we're gonna focus on environmental, okay, the environmental engineer is coming on and we're gonna focus on that part, like.
That totally makes sense to me.
So we were doing that, we were doing that, and I think on a big project of that scale.
Some months.
And we did that for ten, I mean, for Chestnut Street, we said, okay, from, you know, what's the legality?
I guess I'm talking more about like the everyday.
Intro project.
You're talking about the everyday project.
The big projects obviously are gonna get broken down into subparts and that's what we need to focus on, but the. But even on the subparts, there's generally a bylaw or something applicable, I guess what I'm suggesting is let's ground us in the ultimate thing we gotta do. The ultimate thing we gotta do is draft a decision that's consistent with the bylaws, there's elements to every single meeting we have, big project or little. I'm just suggesting, I've noticed, I'm being honest, well, I'll be in, I will listen to an applicant and there's a lot of fluff. And there's not a lot of substance to what actually matters to what a decision is, and we, we tend to repeat things because. That's what happens, because people wanna come in and sell, they're not necessarily focused on what we do, which is, we gotta draft a decision and mark up certain points. The most useful meetings we've had, in my opinion, are those where we as a board are looking at those elements.
Yeah.
And we're thinking about, do we have enough on this element, do we have that? That's what we should be doing with the applicant, the applicant should be.
Behavior thing too, if we tell them that's what we expect, like, I wonder if things will come to us cleaner, like, and require less discussion down the line. I don't think it needs to be super, super, like, directed and obviously, we're not gonna say like. The buzzer dings, like your three minutes on the intro to the project are, are over, but I wonder if just some. Say what we think is important and what we like to see and some allocation, like, I mean, we do that in presentations, that like, when we get. Let's say when we get, uh, um, when we're gonna go to, we're gonna present like an RFP. They tell us like what they want to see and, and how much time they want to spend on each thing and what's important to them, and I wonder if some direction will help.
Almost like an opening statement from us that says, we welcome the applicant, we're excited to hear about the project, we have some general guidelines of what we seek in each project. We're ultimately, you know, grounded in the bylaws, this is the bylaw that applies, we're hoping your presentation will bring us there as quickly as possible, like.
I, I, I also think, and this is a. It's probably somewhat biased, but I also think it's true, I think there's difference in the presentations and the fluff factor. Depending on when the presentation is given by the attorney, no offense to those at the table, and when it's given by the architect. You know, or the engineer, because they don't deal a lot in fluff, right, they're explaining the project, they're explaining the. Why they made the moves that they did, why it sits on the site the way it does, and I think the sales sometimes is coming. From the people that don't, it's very evident to me, they don't really understand the project, they're, they're regurgitating, kinda what they've been. Yeah, what, what they've, what they've heard or whatever versus the architect being able to explain the project, so it might be sometimes that. We want the, we want the project to be explained by the architect, right, not by a representative, not by, you know. And that would get through some of that, I mean, they can explain the, some of it, right, some of it, but those.
I don't know that we can demand that.
I don't know if that's.
I'm not sure we can too, but I think that's a careful thing about like the, about the fluff in the presentation, cause I don't always experience that.
Listen, there's benefits to both, like, a lot of what we do is we have to focus on the placement of a tree or a bench or. Look at details on the building, I'm all for it, I actually am trying to say the exact opposite of that, which is like, in addition to those details. I wasn't thinking about criticizing the details, all of it is important, we want the basis of the project, we want all the architectural and design details. We also want the bylaw, to me, it doesn't really matter who's doing it, lawyer or non-lawyer, the bylaws to me tend to be missing the most. And then by the time we get to our decision, I feel like we're the ones doing the heavy lifting and we're trying to remember. What do we have on this project from that point, and it doesn't really matter to me if it's an architect or an attorney who does it. Someone needs to bring us back.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that on some of these bylaws is, um, how, I don't know the exact words, but how is this fitting into the community?
Yes, exactly.
So in explaining that, they need to explain, not because this tree, and I'm not talking about that level of detail, I'm talking about the big moves on the site.
Yep.
And how those things were placed, and that comes better from the person that did it than the person who's trying to sell it. Right, so, um.
I mean, usually, the people that are trying to sell it are the developers, not the attorneys, um, lawyers are super annoying, I'm not gonna disagree with that. But, uh, I, I can't think of a lot of projects where we've had lawyer presentations, the ones I'm criticizing in my mind, the ones I remember standing out. Tends to be the developer, not the architect, who is kind of spending quite a bit of time on things where I'm just like, okay. We're gonna pass this thing, stop trying to convince me, get to the, you know, we need to talk about conditions, we need to talk about the requirements of the bylaw. Um, that's what I was referencing.
Well, why don't we, again, now it's, it's getting quarter to ten and we still have other things to do on our agenda, so why don't we? There's obviously a discussion here about, especially when these big projects come on and how we can. Get them through a little bit quicker, so, I will have it noted that, um, that we need to talk about that. Um, more, and, and I'm very open to that, cause I don't like to be here all night either. And it really was, no offense about attorneys in general.
I don't, I don't practice law anymore, for the record, I, I've been in compliance in a finance company, in an operational role for. Almost ten years, so we can insult lawyers all you want.
Oh.
I happen to have a law degree and I'm active, but I don't actually practice law, so.
I'm a practicing attorney, but I do find that it, practicing attorneys and myself often quite annoying.
Exactly, I'll, and I'll, I'll second that, I'll make a motion to second that, yeah, I'm with you on that one, so no offense taken.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to have you both on the board, because you have strengths that I do not, I think that's what makes us a strong board. So, um, okay, so, uh, agenda. Um, planning board retreat, check, okay, so going through the things that we have to go through. I assume you're a good, uncomprehensive planner, or is there more that?
I don't have anything else to say.
That you wanna announce or?
We should make sure the, the joint meeting with the select board September.
September fourth.
Yep.
That's on the agenda, I believe, on their upcoming meetings.
On our agenda, yep, as a reminder.
Second page and just to note, Kate and Anna, um, well, to everybody, the next meeting is August fifteenth. And that's gonna be at, back at the library.
Okay. For the, for the, you mean for the.
For comprehensive.
For the comprehensive plan, yep.
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth.
So unless there's other things, is there anything for Metro West Regional?
They haven't done anything since.
They take the summer off.
So, this is obviously just an update item, a report and not a full discussion, nor do we have time. But, um, the first on MBTA, obviously, there's a, a calendar here. Um, that is being filled out about MB, the MBTA regulations and we will, as Kate suggested, start advertising for the. The two public discussions, which are not public hearings, those come later, um, but the general public discussions, which we also had last time. Which is, which was a really great and valuable way to get, um, just some really open feedback about. What people thought should be included and not included, we got some great questions, you know, on there. So what we were planning to do is to, as you see, um, in the first box there, select board and planning board update. Because as you know, it's very hard to get the two boards together, um. Peter and Elvero were going to give a presentation, a more formal update. Um, uh, for the planning board on the twenty fifth for us. Um, it's not something that necessarily needs to be hours, it's just, uh, to, to, um. Make sure we're up to date on that, we wanted to do it before we have these public discussions, so you kinda see where we're are. Oh, everything that we're are is actually reflected on these sheets, so, which I'll talk about in a minute. Um, and then the select board on, so Joe Mignani on, um, eight fourteen. Oh, yeah, okay, sorry, sorry, um, so we're giving like a little update now and we're gonna have a more of an update on, um. Um, when we have our joint meeting will be kind of the big thing, wait a minute, Peter, when is update boards about?
So we're gonna update boards on the current process, so.
Yeah, no, see, this should be, this should be in August, um, sorry, so that's seven twenty-five, should be eight twenty-five, so our, so there's gonna be. Eight twenty-two, sorry, um, so on that date, we're gonna have a more. A, a bigger discussion just on the planning board, we can invite the select board if they wanna come, we can also go to theirs if people wanna participate. But we just didn't think we'd be able to get everyone together again, right, so we said, hey, we'll do these. Updates separately in the boards, um, and, um, and then proceed with the public discussions. Then come back with a formal meeting with the select board and the planning board in the same room. To, to talk about all the results from that, with updates in between, of course, in between the public discussions. So what the, what these things are, obviously, one is the calendar, this one, which is, um. Yeah, and, uh, I apologize, the Elvero didn't, didn't catch all of my tweaks on this, so. And I think some of them are really important, so, um. The, um, the thing in red below, actually, as on the map. Should have been marked in orange, show, it's not supposed to be highlighted in red, it should be orange because, as you can see from the key. There are projects that are approved but not built and UCG is in that category, it's not supposed to be. I'm, I'm gonna have him update this and send it to the board, so it's correct. And also that line about not considered in fall MBTA proposal, that shouldn't be there. Um, it's meant just to understand what this is and the, kind of the, you know, what that project is. Um, we are look, we are looking for, um, how can we not include that project? If we don't wanna include it, because that's the one, one of the ones we mark as high risk, Kate asked the question before, like, well, why not? And so we tried in this chart to outline, hey, what's a permit, what's the benefits of it now, right, so that benefit is. It's, it's a low unit count, um, it's twenty-five percent affordable and it's age restricted. All of which go away if it's i- in just MBTA zoning, right, so, um. So that's why we tried, that's why we were like trying to take that out, but we have not made a decision that it's absolutely coming out and I think that's.
So we asked before and you guys were gonna do is like, what is the zoning now that could be there?
Yeah, so that's what.
Only way to.
Yeah, so that's what's under the FAR, right, so, the second to last comment is pro- proposed, permitted, built units per acre. Um, and that shouldn't be units per acre, that should be density. Um, so, uh, again, I, I'm gonna have a fresh copy sent, cause this isn't my right, the density is showing. What it's, um, you know, what's it, what it's proposed as, permitted as, right? Um, and then the next one is units per acre, that's a result of, of that permitting, so, um. So I don't know if that, I don't know if that answers your question.
I think it's just the titles to make sense of them.
You want the titles to make sense.
What is, what is currently.
Proposed.
Built, proposed or allowed, because like, ten to sixty Main Street doesn't have any housing. But you're saying, so I, it's confusing.
Yeah, so proposed meant, um, with the current, um.
With the current numbers coming in as the forty B.
The forty B proposal.
Yep.
So should we label those as forty B proposals?
I thought we were gonna say without, like, the base, I thought we were going to the base zoning right now if nothing changed.
Oh, okay.
I thought we agreed to that, because that's the way to make sense of it, so.
Um, we, we can add another column in there.
We think we were gonna look at current zoning.
Yes.
What does the current zoning allow for density?
From a density standpoint, yeah, well, and just, just to note, there's a couple of different things, right? There's FAR, which is floor ratio, right, which is a different, which is a different mathematical calculation of how many units you can get on an acre, on a, on a lot. And then you have, then you have, you know, and then the MBTA is units per acre, right, so you're, you're trying to mesh. Two different calculations into one, which is very difficult to do, especially when you're talking about FAR. Because it's more of a lot calculation and then you gotta get into unit size, X, Y, and Z.
Yeah, the same building with the exact, with a two FAR can have one unit on it, or can have a hundred units on it, same FAR. Right, and that's what's in the zoning for some of these districts is FAR, not units per acre. So you can't, there is no number to give, right, you have to say, well, on.
You're taking the average.
So the apples and oranges to me is. What is, the way I think about it, because I'm thinking to prior discussions we had with the select board. What matters to me, I think, is what is the current zoning, it's not about density necessarily as much as like, what does the current zoning allow, period? Because does it allow five stories or four stories, does it allow sixteen stories, because once you have a forty B, you can pretty much do. Whatever stories you want.
Yeah, so we'll.
So, uh, it's not just about density, to, to your point, Peter, yeah, it's a different definition of density. But we do need to understand what's, what is currently allowed in these areas, in general.
Right, we need to know where.
It doesn't need to be the same lingo.
Right, well, um, okay, just, so, um, ten to sixty Main Street, right, that is under zoning for. That's in, um, ADDA, right?
It's ADDA, correct.
So that is, uh, I believe, is it two units per acre or one point five, uh, FAR, sorry, not use, units per acre, FAR. So it's, it's an FAR of two. That tells you nothing about the units per acre, nor can I provide that, because it doesn't. Uh, FAR doesn't talk about units per acre.
But what is it allow, what is it, what's the, so where did this number come from on the chart? That's why I just.
That came from, the thirty-two under, no, under ten sixteen, the thirty-six?
Yeah.
That came from what is being proposed by the forty B.
It's proposed slash permitted slash both.
So we need to be more clear about what that number is.
Yeah.
About both what is, what is allowed, which is a two, a one point five or two of FAR, which is not attached to units per acre. Or the thirty-six units per acre, which is being proposed by the forty B. I know it's hard to, the FAR is a really hard thing to get a hold of. Cause it doesn't have to do with units per acre, there can be three bedroom units or there can be studio apartments and you're gonna get totally different units per acre.
So, so, I'm, I don't want you guys to have to do work that's not necessary, what I'm, I'm trying to take myself back to the conversation we had with the select board. Where there was a res- residents who were discussing, um, building or. Allowing their property into the forty B, excuse me, into the MBTA discussion, the MBTA discussion, next to.
The transition.
Thank you, next to the transition.
Burnums.
The whole, Burnums, thank you so much, and the whole discussion circled around this idea, one of the ideas that we kept discussing. Was what could they do right now by right, what could they do?
When we looked.
Relative to MBTA, and so, to me, what matters is an understanding of the, these, these areas. Right now, what can you do there by right, what can you do there by special permit and what would you be able to do there per MBTA? That's what I'm visualizing.
Right, so what's, so, but what's important to understand, just like, as it was.
Yeah.
It just that it was hard for those owners to. just that it was hard for those owners to understand, is that property is determined by FAR, and it is by right. They can do housing by right, they can, they can do multi, they can do, they can do it by right, not special permit.
That's what I mean. That was, that was missing from clarity. And so for me-
Right, but you still can't understand it signed up by units per acre.
I get that. And I get that too. And I guess I'm okay with the imperfect, to your point, it's apples and oranges relative to density.
Yes.
But it's still an instructive, we need to be able to understand, what is the current zoning, and what is the MBTA zoning? And yes, they're different, they're apples and oranges, but it's a visual for the public and for us as to what we're changing. We're moving from this kind of thing to this kind of thing. We're moving from apples over here to oranges over here. By right, or, do you know what I'm saying?
Totally different. I do.
It doesn't need to be the same apples, apples. But because it's apples to oranges, we need to be able to convey that, and we need to be able to communicate it, because what I heard in our prior discussion with the select board is a lack of clarity. That's what I heard. I don't think it's clear, even to the select board, what is allowed there by right now or not.
I can tell you right now, mixed use is allowed by right on that property under ADDA, right? There's no, there's been no projects in Ashland that have taken place under ADDA. I believe everything has been done under ADDC, right? ADDA is the highest floor area ratio at 2.0, right?
How many stories can they do by right?
Three.
Okay.
So they will probably never, and no project, right, will ever hit 2.0 FAR on any project in Ashland, because you have parking requirements and you have height limitations, right? So if you back up a little bit and you say, okay, well, let's look at 10 to 60, let's look at, let's look at 128 Main Street, right, that has a FAR of 1.5, I can tell you right now that I think that's at 1.8, no, 1.08, right? That is because it can't go that high as a 1.5, is because of all the other limitations that you have, right?
Sounds like another cleanup.
It is a-
It might be.
It might be.
I mean, FAR is a very common way to do things, because it controls the mass of what you're putting there, the shape, how big is the box. But it doesn't control what goes in the box. Units per acre controls what goes in the box. So there were, I'm sure when this was created, there was a, and there are very valid reasons for doing FAR, but it's hard to compare.
It doesn't match up to MBTA zoning, which is units per acre.
But what I'm hearing, yes, but, so what I'm hearing is that, and I, like, I'm a little frustrated, because some of these things aren't, the corrections aren't made. So what I'm, what I'm gonna do is to try to provide more information on a separate page, like a one, eight and a half by 11 table, with more information. It'll get more complicated, but it's just more complicated.
But it ultimately makes it simpler. If we can't explain this to people, if we're asking people to consider a change, and we can't tell them what it is now, I would, I would say you're not gonna get this passed.
Well, you don't, you don't know what we're proposing.
If we cannot explain this to people, they're not gonna want to vote for it.
Yeah, I mean, those questions-
Because it's a change, it's not, it's not-
Yeah, yeah, so that's what, well, we'll put it, like I said, I'm a, this, it's not quite right, so-
I think our goal, like, one of our goals was to be able to convey to the public that the, certain areas, there's not even gonna be change relative to what's already there. So it would be good to be able to demonstrate that, I guess. But I also feel like we're creating extra work for you, so I wouldn't be-
It's all extra work. At the end of the day, but I'll tell you this right now, under ADDA, you have two different things, right? And you're trying to, in, the MBTA zoning, right, is trying to, is, is on the units per acre, ADDA is on FAR.
Yeah.
And so to mesh those two things is difficult, right? And so I think what we're trying to show in this, this, this chart, right, which is, which Elvero put together nicely, is that, okay, let's look at, okay, what was proposed, and what's the MBTA stuff gonna be, and what's the difference, right? And I think we can clean it up, and we can get back, and we can kind of send it out. But this is difficult stuff, right? 100%. And not everyone's gonna be able to, A, will follow it, and B, knows the ins and the outs, right? But they trust-
But we have to make this followable to the public. I mean, ultimately, those-
And I think it will be. And it, and it is, to tell you, you know, and it is. I think, I think it's gonna be a mix. Some people will be able to follow it, and some people are gonna have a hard time following it, because it's hard to follow. And I'm not gonna say that FAR can be made understandable to every single person, but we'll do our best, and maybe have to understand it in words, not just on a piece of paper, because it's, it's just not-
It's very hard to make a visual representation of a complex zoning bar law that speaks a different language from the MBTA. I get that, I really do. Can we, I, I don't know about you guys, my brain is starting to slightly, I think this is a very difficult thing to fix late at night.
That's why I didn't, I wasn't intending to go into this, it was supposed to be just an update.
So I'm very hesitant to even, to even stand by my suggestions, because I think it's so late at night, that I don't wanna, like, I'm gonna take what I suggested back, because I feel like it's too late at night to even properly discuss this topic, to the point where I can actually say, change it. I don't think it's a fair time.
No, I'm gonna work with Peter and Elvero, based on what we said today, to, to provide more information that hopefully makes it simpler to understand.
Great, yeah. And I, I did not intend to create extra work-
No.
At this hour.
No.
Because I don't think that's fair.
No, no, like I said, it's a, it's a little, yeah. So, and Elvero's on the same page. He said, I need people to look at it, so I understand what they don't understand, so I can help them understand.
Maybe we should give this one more shot-
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna-
Earlier in our meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, we'll be talking about it. You guys can definitely, you know, maybe we have it on the agenda for the 8th.
Yeah.
So that Peter and Elvero, like, I don't need them to go through it with me again, right? They can go through it with you guys.
That's fine.
You know, so, and that might be helpful. Okay, sorry about that. All right, don't need to do anything on number seven. On number eight, there's nothing with Wittenmore, is there?
Legally, no, we're just working with the attorneys continuously. Our conservation's office is working with them legally. I'm having continued conversations with the, with the, with the, with the developers, with the contractors. We hope work to get done out there, but we're, we're following all avenues that we need to do, and we're trying to be proactive to, to make work, to, to get work going back out there, to get it done.
Okay.
The biggest thing I can talk to is number four, and that's the Starbucks. Tomorrow is the ribbon cutting, 4 o'clock, if, if anybody's interested in being down there. The occupancy permit was granted today. Saturday is the first day it'll be open. The, please know-
Saturday, this Saturday they're open?
This Saturday, they're open. Inside looks awesome, been great. There are some outstanding landscape issues that I've talked about with the owners, with the developers, with the site workers. Those are all elements regarding the bushes in the front at the apex. They're taking those out. They were in the process of taking those out on, yesterday, until we realized that they did not have a dig safe, and there's some underground electrical wires that pertain to the overhead lights. And so therefore, they stopped, they halted a little bit. So all the landscaping is gonna get done. Obviously, it's the best time to plant grass in September, to get this grass growing. And so those, all those issues are conditioned on the occupancy permit. Just as a note, however, the big story is Saturday, coffee will be poured at Starbucks. Tomorrow is the ribbon cutting. Please feel free and enjoy yourself.
Yeah, ribbon cutting's at 4. I think everyone got an invite, right?
Yeah, I thought I, I might be able to go. I'm trying to, trying to see if I can make it work, but I may not be able to. We'll see.
I think everyone's excited. I've been down there every day this week, and I can't tell you how many people went to, tried to go through the drive-through line.
I saw the upcoming soon sign today. Because yesterday, I was like, I could see people thinking about pulling in there, like, as I was driving down. And then today, I saw the coming soon sign. I was like, that was probably why.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, the building's gonna open, Starbucks is excited. I think everyone's excited. There's a couple site issues that have to be worked out, and they are gonna be worked out. But just wanted to give you everyone the heads up on that.
Okay, so update on 100 Chestnut Street. I don't know when it was, it was hot, all I remember is that.
Yep.
But Peter and I met with the architect and the developer. There was a few people from the development team there, out at the site, because Peter and I were there earlier, and I noticed things that were different on the approved drawings than on the building, right? None of it was that big, but I was just, I had questions, right? And it's, it's important to remember that when projects go through, they're not even 50% done, like they're a fraction of the design done, you know, at that point. So this is a, you know, pretty normal thing. Like I said, I don't think most people would even notice them, but I had the drawings in front of me, and I did. So I asked questions. So we had a meeting out there, and we went through some of the things that had changed and for what reason. Sometimes it was in the interior layout of apartments had to change because of whatever. Sometimes it was a certain business that was asking for a front entry door versus this entry on the side, you know, things like that, so to get, to fill the business lots. And so I asked them, none of it seemed egregious to me, none of it seemed out of character with what we had approved, but I asked them to take the original drawings, put the, as it was being built, drawings in the same configuration, and call out the things that have changed, right? Call them out, so it's very obvious for everybody to see. And so they're doing that, they're in the process of doing that. They called, they sent a draft. I think there's still some more things I want them to call out on there. I mean, a lot of things are just different. Like, you don't have the exact window size when you're, because you didn't do your window order yet, like, when you're putting in the windows, right? So there's lots of stuff, stuff like that in process. So they will be providing those drawings. I think the architect actually said he or someone from his office-
He's happy to come.
Could come and explain those changes and what, for, why the, why the changes were done. So I just wanted to give an update on that. It's nothing I'm, seems to me as par for the course, especially not only in a building that size, but in the little buildings I work on.
This is which one?
100 Chestnut Street, under construction. So, and full disclosure, I realized at that meeting, I would not have realized if they had not said it, but the architect, Matt-
Marata.
Marata. And also Eric Swenson from the development team are my former students. Like, I had them apparently about 20 years ago in studio. I guess, I guess Matt was trying to figure out during these presentations if I recognized him. I had no idea until this meeting onsite. It was quite embarrassing, actually. But I had no idea who, who they were. I mean, I've had hundreds, if not thousands, of students. I didn't-
No way.
Uh, no way, yeah. So, anyway, but, full disclosure.
I'm a former student and didn't know.
So it's all your fault, and you can mess up.
What's that?
You're the teacher, it's all your fault.
It could be, yeah.
So these changes that you happened upon, like, is there, again, with process, a threshold that we should say you shall, and like, discuss?
I think we should consider some conditions in our decision-
Yeah.
That makes it clear that what we consider to be worthy of notification.
Exactly.
We should think about it. I don't know what the answer is. Like, you're like, oh, it's part of the course, because, like, I would imagine, when you make a plan, and then you go out and you order the windows, they're out of stock. What do you do? Well, my expectation is if we actually cared enough to approve a design of a window, there are buildings, like, I'm thinking about the old design that's now gone, pre-40B of Main Street. There was a lot of interesting detail in that, whatever rendering of the brick and the, in the design of the windows. If suddenly those windows were not purchasable, and it changes in the size or shape, I would consider that to be a big deal, me personally. I don't, I want you to get the one that you presented, not the cheaper version that you can now find. So I think we, as a board, need to come to some consensus about what is normal for changes and what's not. Like, yeah, maybe the quality on some sort of micro level, I don't really care about, or a little tree's moving, you know, a few feet, maybe I don't care that much. But like, shapes of things, locations of things on the building, like the Starbucks issue that came up, where they put it on the wrong, you know, they put the little electrical thing in a random location. Stuff like that, to me, is a big deal.
Yeah, I mean, I think that discussion does have to happen, because like, the electrical panel wasn't a ran, a random location.
Yeah.
It was like, the, probably the appropriate-
Well-
Location for the project. But at 60, at 60% or whatever percentage that the drawing is presented to us as, because you can't bring it into full tuition and, you know, fruition.
But we didn't even know that until somebody walked by, noticed it.
No, it was me.
No, no, like, but I mean, the Starbucks thing was you two?
Yes.
Great. So, so maybe we have the clause called, if Tricia walks by the building and notices, you have to come back. I don't know what we call this clause, whatever it is, we need to think about it.
I, I do, and, and that's why, and that's why I didn't say onsite, yeah, it's good, you know, whatever. I said, no, this needs to come before the board. Like, the board needs to understand these changes. I said, my personal opinion is that these are, these are, if these are in the spirit of what's been going on, that probably no one would know them, notice them, upset me.
Here's the thing, Tricia, what you do is a lot, and I appreciate it very much, but it's like, that's not a fair way for you to function as a chair, to have to go check projects out, nor is it necessarily okay, in my mind, that one person is deciding, is this good or is this not good? Is this consistent or not consistent? I think we, as a board, need to figure out the expectation of what that is, rather than like, oh, our chair is gonna go check it out. What if you can't check it out that day?
No, I, I, that's why I'm totally agreeing with that. Like, I'm totally agreeing with that, but it's like, we'll have to, I, I will have to figure out what is the, with the understanding that these projects are submitted rightly and correctly, not at 100%, right? Like, it just can't-
They can't have to come back for every little thing.
They can't. We would be dealing with, with one of these buildings every meeting, right?
But everyone's different definition of what's a little thing.
That's right.
Very tricky thing to quantify.
That's right. So how we get to that, and how we put it in our conditions, and how we, it's gonna be an interesting discussion, because I don't know what the answer is. So-
Interesting note, I think, the developer was forthcoming, right? And he asked, and theoretically, it all came out when, when we went up, I, they asked, and they invited, I've been going up there, they said, let's come, come up and look at the siding colors. Siding colors are very important to everybody, right? So obviously, I, you know, having Tricia in town, I said, hey, Tricia, I'm going to the site, look at siding colors. And then when we were up there looking at the siding colors, which were spot on, we started to notice a couple tweaks. And it wasn't a couple large tweaks, it was just, you know, they go through that design change. And so that's where this conversation sparks from. I just want to be clear about that. And so-
Do you know what's going in that requires a door in the inside, or is that?
No, I don't think it was, I don't think it was, I don't think, I think someone asked even, and they're like, well, we don't know.
There was splitting, so there was a, there was a-
Oh, that was right.
There's a commercial space, right? And so the commercial space had one door coming through it, right? And so now, they have two proposed tenants in that one space. And so they, each tenant wanted their own door, their own separate office.
They both want a front door, like, no one wants a side door, right?
And so they had a side door proposed, which kind of went in under a residential-
But they're not still in the, yeah.
Balcony.
They did, no, I think they, they didn't want to be a, you know, and then have to be like-
When is it gonna open?
It's false, it's false service, right? Like, yeah. They said there was nothing signed, kind of, kind of-
Starbucks is open tomorrow, man.
Yeah.
I mean, Saturday.
Amanda's like, what else is opening? Come on, come on. What am I gonna do after I get my coffee?
So I, I think, I think it's a, it's definitely a valid question about how we, how we go forward with this. I don't think it's gonna be an easy one.
These are very long, my children don't sleep.
Can, is this under, I think it's under administrative matters? I mean, it's not listed, but of the, the 10 to 60 Main Street 40B application, have we heard anything?
I have no, no update. Nope. That's up at Mass Housing.
And they're both-
Both of them, yep. Both of them at Mass Housing. They have their time, they're working within their timeframes. And so I have had no communication with Mass Housing at this point.
All right, so-
I have no update, update.
Anything else that needs to be discussed besides?
What, any update on the mural for the Starbucks?
Not that I know.
Not that I know. I know the last artist that we, that they were talking to pulled out of, pulled, pulled out of the running and decided not to take the job on.
Due to-
That I didn't know.
Due to, I think, the whole complexity of the tri-party contracts and pay- Due to, I think, the whole complexity of, of the tri-party contracts and payments and, and.
Funding.
Funding too, but I think it was more of, um, everything, right? This is a project procurement. Um, uh, you know, it, it, I will say this, right? The idea of putting a mural on a building as a town project on private property, it's a lot easier said than done. And that's pretty much my takeaway from this entire process. Um, in that now we're back to, let's find a muralist that's interested in working with us, um, to do this project.
That's too bad. I didn't know that. All right, anything else? Are we ready to clear up some meeting minutes? What do we have? First Aug- uh, February first?
Yeah, the February first one's an old meeting. Um, obviously it was a long time ago, kinda slipped through the wickets, I would say. Um, this is a Zoom meeting that the planning board had with sustainability committee to discuss the tree bylaws. These minutes were kind of borrowed from the sustainability committee as the meetings were already written for that. Uh, the minutes were already written for that meeting, obviously, and so we were just, um, we put it on ti- uh, put it on, on planning board letterhead and kinda put everything together.
So I think there's a there's a couple things that I don't really understand what comment I was actually making.
I, I had the same reaction to mine, because I was like, what the hell do they think I said?
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand.
But I don't know how to make it better.
Yeah, well, the only one that I, the only one that I.
Exactly.
The one that matters to me is, um, is, um, on line seventy-three, because that's the one I do remember. It says, Ms. Kendall says she does not believe that anyone in town is against trees. True. But when confronted with trees or an expanding town, and I think I specifically said when I said, when confronted with trees or a new town, you know, I, I think it said the YMCA, frankly. Um, but it could be like a, a new, a new town amenity. You know, we could say something like that, but I think I was comparing the trees to the YMCA. You know, then you might make a different choice. I think that's what I was.
I would say a new town amenity.
Okay. And that's the same thing later, and this, this residence might favor the new amenity over the trees or something like that. Because I don't think the students or that, I don't think residents would just vote for an expanding town instead of trees. That seems, uh, not true. Okay, that was my only one. What's that?
Proposal to annex part of Hockington to expand the town.
Oh, right, right. We need more space.
I'll mention that to the comprehensive planning committee. Planning board suggested.
We are so smart.
Annexation.
Will we good? Should I make a motion?
I'm good, if.
Um, I make a motion to accept the February first twenty twenty-four minutes as amended at the meeting tonight.
I'll second it.
Alvaro, call vote.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Oh, um.
Yeah.
Amanda Hayes, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So then now we're at the June eighteenth meetings. These were about.
This is the Zoom meeting, the online Zoom meeting when we came up with the letter, when we finalized the letter for the sixty-one Waverly Street forty B.
Okay, right. Um, just a, I think this is correct, but Wildwood Zone D multifamily, there's a height limit of five stories for residential commercial together. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It's under my comment, but I don't remember that I made that comment, so it was probably just, uh, I, I'm not sure. Maybe I did, cause I was looking at the zoning at that time, but I can't remember.
Are these still generated by a person or, or by AI?
A person.
Great. I've never been quoted so much before.
All right, I'm, I'm good with these.
So am I. I'll make a motion to approve the June eighteenth meetings as is.
If, if you guys are good with them.
I just made that conclusion based on their faces.
It's based on the silence.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Amanda Hayes, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. And now we're on to June twentieth.
I was not at the June twentieth. Can someone remind me, do I vote for these?
I don't think you can.
I don't think I can. So I'm out. Out of this one. I was not, that's fine. But I was not at the June twentieth, so.
Wow, that's fine.
So June twentieth, okay, yeah. So that's when we
Where the hell was I?
Do we approve?
This is when we approved six Chestnut and, uh.
One fifty-one.
Correct, the fire station.
Oh, yes, I remember missing one.
And we finished the letter for sixty-one, uh, I mean, and we six, we finished the forty B letter.
Holy cow, that was a, that was a big meeting. It's painful just to look at it. No, and a lot release, that's right. Okay, I think I'm good as, as is.
I make a motion that we accept the June twenty twenty-four minutes as presented.
Is there a second? I guess, I guess I can second, right? I will second. And I guess Amanda could too, cause you were there, but a roll call vote.
I can second.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Amanda Hayes, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So those are.
Oh, sorry, it's a complete space that you could not.
Yeah.
You're good.
Sorry, five is, five cover, I mean, three covers.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Unless we have something else.
Uh, just one thing, um, August eighth, planning board meeting. He said, I am not here, I am traveling. Amanda says she might be able to come on. She's also traveling. So, um.
I was gonna come on if they needed it for us, for that decision, but.
Yeah, I don't think I can get on at all. Um, so Anna, that means you're on unless, uh, as chair, unless
Sure.
Someone else wants to.
I'm just gonna check on Marcelo. And Marcelo, I'm gonna check with Marcelo with his attendance, cause I know he's traveling.
He said if, if Tricia and Marcel are out, we can't hold the meeting, right?
No, you still have a quorum.
Oh, we have Deepa.
We only need three as a quorum.
Can be there, right? You checked with her?
I can check with her.
I thought there was a meeting in August she could make, my imagination.
It's on my calendar in my office, but, um, I'll send out an email just to double check with everybody.
Yeah, but let me know if you need me to chair it, I'll chair it.
Okay, and I will be getting this MBTA stuff to everybody, cause I won't, it, I won't need to be able to study it. And, yeah, with plenty of time, so.
My only thing is the very last week of August, the week of the twenty-sixth or whatever, is the week I'm taking my daughter to college, so I'm useless that week. So if you guys have, if we're doing something MBTA related or whatever, or planning board related, that's the week that I'm useless.
So you'll be at the meeting.
Oh, the twenty-second I can do, but the week after I cannot.
There's five, okay, so there's, there's there's five Thursdays in August. There's the, so we're gonna meet on the eighth and the twenty-second.
Perfect, that I can do.
And so you're out the week of the twenty-sixth, which is the twenty-sixth through the thirty-first. And so I, I assume Labor Day is gonna be on the second.
The second.
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha. And then we're gonna come back after Labor Day. That Wednesday is gonna be that meeting with the select board. Okay, so that's fine, okay. I feel like that, a lot of people are gonna be.
Come up. If something news
At this point, I think right now.
Not so much, okay.
I think that's gonna be a week, uh, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a week.
Labor Day week.
Where everyone's gonna enjoy the last
Stop.
Week of summer and.
I'm assuming we're gonna stay rem- So sorry to hear that. I'm assuming we're gonna continue hybrid in the fall. The state still allows us to do that and all that.
I assume since we are the only board besides the school committees, like board that are meeting in person, everyone else is still hybrid, which is allowed till twenties through twenty-six, I believe, that we will just keep things going the way they are. All right, so we had, we had, we were, we adjourned?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at ten thirty-one PM.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Anna Tesmenitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Amanda Hayes, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Thanks, everybody.